Like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Southfield regular meeting of the Planning Commission for April 28, 2021. It's conducted via WebEx teleconference. I'd like to start out with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper.
Chair.
Mr. Griffiths.
I'm here.
Mr. Huntington.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Mia is excused. Dr. Stevens Gunn.
How's that?
Mr. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum to conduct business this evening.
Okay, looking for a motion on approval of the agenda?
Through the chair, this is Commissioner Rob Willis. I would move for approval of agenda dated this day, April 28, 2021.
Support.
Mr. Martin. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Willis, supported by Commissioner Martin. We have a roll call vote on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper.
Yes.
Mr. Huntington.
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you have an approval of your agenda for this evening.
Okay, do we have any announcements or communications?
None at this time, sir.
Okay. All right, well, actually, we do have one announcement. To read into the record, the for public comment, any person addressing the commission shall be limited to a period of three minutes unless such period of time is extended by the presiding officer or by the majority vote of the commission. The following rules of procedure have been established for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or planning commission member that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or planning commission member performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the planning commission. And any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the planning commission refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the planning commission and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may take whatever actions necessary to remove the person from the meeting. In this case, with the digital meeting, Jeff, you're, I believe, you're on the trigger on these things, so it'll be much easier. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I do have the ability to mute any person who does violate any one of these procedures, sir.
All right. So with that, we will head into the public hearings. The first one being first item, PZRODD 21-0001.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the property located on Civic Center Drive at Central Park Boulevard. This is the Arbor Lofts project. This did come before you back in 2016 for an overlay development district agreement for the corner. The existing building is occupied, but the ODD included some new units along Civic Center Drive as well as some new units on the north side of the property, north of the existing building. So this request again is to amend the existing 2016 ODD agreement for 24 units along Civic Center Drive, the conversion of three existing carports to six units, two per carport, three new carport structures, an outdoor pet area, and then up to 36 new units on the northern portion of the property. This is a little closer view of the property itself, the existing building in the middle, the three existing carports just to the south, and as I noted, the petitioner is looking to convert those into living units. Existing zoning is RC, again with an existing overlay development district on it, future land use city center sub area. This is the proposal for the new plan or the amended overlay development district. You can see the units along Civic Center Drive. For the most part, those remain unchanged. The only change is at the very corner of Central Park Boulevard and Civic Center Drive. The previous proposal had a retail establishment on that particular corner. In lieu of doing retail at this time, the petitioner is showing a park area, so basically it would become green space and gathering space on the corner. Should retail become something that would be needed in the future, the retail then would be constructed at that time. Just north of these units are the three carports, again, that those would be converted into units as well. There are garage port structures on the south side of the building, two new carports on the north side of the building, and then the new units on the north side closer to the north property line. These particular units originally, and you'll see that in a second within the comparison between the two, originally were going north, south, and some east and west. These particular units are all going north, south. The landscape plan for the property. And then here's a comparison between the two overlay development districts. The 2016 ODD is on the left-hand side. You can see how the units were arranged with a driveway actually in between them. And then the proposed ODD with significantly less units than was previously approved in 2016. Some further comparison, the First Amendment, November 2016, 276 total spaces. Phase one was completed, phase two, which are the units along Civic Center Drive, 16 to 24 units. Phase three would allow anywhere from 32 to 72 units with shallow balconies, typical size 500 to 1,000 square feet. Then, as I noted, the retail portion on the corner, and then the amenities as shown. The 2021 overlay development district has reduced the total number of parking spaces to 251. Single-family residential, again, phase one completed. Phase two remains at 24 with the shallow balconies, but now includes the carport conversion for the six apartments, and then up to 36 units with shallow balconies, 400 square feet to 1,200 square feet for phase three. And then, as I noted, the pocket park in lieu of the retail building for the time being, and then actually increased amenities as part of 2021 to include the pet area and the pocket park and the outside gathering. These are the townhome units, the floor plans along Civic Center Drive and what those first floors look like, and those are all garages. Second floor plan showing the various units, basically they're single units. And then above that, on the third floor, those are actually more like micro units, and you can see that there are six shown there on the third floor. The carport conversions, again, these are carports that are currently existing. This is a layout for the interior floor plans for each of those carports. Elevations of the carport. An aerial view looking west of the property, should it be completely constructed, as shown in the ODD. This is looking southwest from north, so this would be brand-new carports on the north side of the building, of the existing building. This is also looking southwest, you can see the carport conversion there with how those would look, as well as the units that are along Civic Center Drive. This is looking northwest from, basically would be those units along Civic Center to those converted carports and then the existing building. The pet area that's being proposed, and again, that's being done at the request of the owners of the units within the existing building right now. The pocket park that's on the corner of Civic Center Drive and Central Park. And then with that, staff has no more comments at this time. I do know that the petitioner is on the line, and Mr. Chairman, if we can give them an opportunity for further presentation and additional comments?
Yes, that'd be great. Just please state your name and address for the record and anything you'd like to add to the project presentation?
Yes, sir, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Peter Stuhlreier. I'm the owner and chief architect of Design House Architecture of Auburn Hills, Michigan. Glad to be here tonight to present our modification or amendment to the ODD. Jeff did a great job explaining everything. There's not a lot here, I'll be honest with you. We've kind of fine-tuned this over the course of time with ownership based on the amenities that have been, I guess, requested from the tenants of the main building. That includes additional carports and a place to walk the dog because it is a pet-friendly building. And then just a reorganization, basically, of the layout of the same units that we were proposing in 2016 in terms of the townhomes. So with that, I think that we're adding some amenities, including the park space, and obviously some of that retail is based on the current economic conditions that we have removed and replaced with a pocket park. But basically, we're proposing essentially the same kind of generally mixed-use development, but it's predominantly, obviously, residential. And just looking for your feedback as we proceed through and prepare to begin.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Like to open it up to the public at this time. Do we have any, anybody on the line, Jeff, for this project?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to, just to the public, you have, as was noted at the very beginning, three minutes. We'd like you to state your name and address for the record. And again, keep your comments just to this particular item this evening, to this PZRODD only. And then with that, if there are any members of the public who would like to speak, again, state your name and address for the record, and then you can go ahead and make your comments at this time, and we'll take you one at a time.
Jeff, this is Terry. Is there another slide that has the phone number?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there does. Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
While we're waiting.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, because of the little time delay between this meeting and then what's shown online, we'll just wait another minute or so to see if anyone else has a comment.
Okay, no problem.
And again, for those public who are online, likely for a future item on this agenda, if you do have a comment about this one, make sure you unmute yourself because I do see that we do have a number of callers who are on mute. All right, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't appear that we have anyone on the line with public comment for PZRODD 21-0001.
Okay. Open up to the commission for comments or questions?
Chair, Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes.
As I said in our previous meeting, I think this is a good project. I, Pete, I'm glad that you're going north and south with the units now because that looks much better north and south. And having that park area on that corner and what you plan to do for the landscaping, I really think it would transform that whole corner into a very beautiful area, especially compared to what we are hoping to have in that space next to you. So I'm in a call with this and meets our master plan, and I think it's a good fit for that area. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Huntington?
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Huntington.
Okay, yeah, I really like the changes that were made from the previous proposal. I think the traffic lawyers thing seems to flow a lot better. I like the innovative thinking on this project, but I think it's, I think it's good for the city, it's something different, and I think it fits well. I think the planning's been very good on this project, and I have good feelings that they're gonna do a great job with it. Thank you.
Through the chair, this is Commissioner Rob Willis.
Go ahead, Commissioner Willis.
Going to reflect other comments. I think it's a great project. I look forward to seeing people in the area. You know, I can see it adding to the vitality just all around with projects that we have now and into the future, so definitely a support.
Hey, Commissioner Willis, next time, see if you can kick your microphone volume up a little, little higher.
I will try, thank you.
I could barely catch you.
Okay, thank you so much.
No problem.
Through the chair, this is Geraldine Stevens Gunn.
Yes. Go ahead, Geraldine.
Thank the developer for listening to the homeowners within the facility and the dog park. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I also think that the new units are going to be very easy to find additional Southfield residents for. So thank you very much for creating such a wonderful space on that particular property.
Mr. Martin, anything? Any questions? I think you're on mute still.
I just have one general question that's really more about phase one. Can you tell me what the occupancy is of the phase one building?
I'm not sure if ownership is on, but they could.
I'm on here. Hi, everybody. Hello, hopefully having a wonderful night. It's about 94, 95% pretty consistently. There's usually maybe one or two vacant units, and within a month, they're occupied again, so people really want to live in Southfield, isn't that great?
It is great, and I think with the student population the way it is right now at Lawrence, at the college, that it will be greatly used. I think it's a great idea for the area. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I said before, I'll say it again, I'm really excited by this project, I'm excited by the style of architecture and the making this a mixed-use site. There was already a conversion of an office building to loft, which was, which was cool to see. Definitely would like to see the increased density and people walking around the city center district. Really interested to see some of these new trendier units, the micro units, the smaller square footages. Really think it's a great amenity to have garages with, with a lot of these rental units. It's a lot of the missing housing types that we've, we've been, I guess, seeking in the city. That was a lot of single-family large lots and a lot of high-rise without amenities. So I think this is, this is a very modern mix and the way we need to move forward in this city. Very excited for this project. I was just curious, could you state or would you predict your, your construction timing if, if all things go well?
You want me to take that one, Goll?
Yeah, because you're the plan. You're the plan.
Well, I believe we already have a permit on the north, on the south strip of townhomes, so we think that that could be this year, and then next year would be the north phase of the, of the townhomes and the additional carports. So, yeah, so that's our, that's our prediction right now. We know we have the market demand for the units, so we're just trying to cross our Ts and dot our Is and come through with the ODD, and then we've got our site planning building permit basically ready to go.
If I could ask a follow-up question through the chair to Peter. So I know, I know phase one of the Civic Center Townhomes is the first six units, and as, as those fill up, logically, you probably would move westward. And you mentioned the other housing next year if everything goes good, but I'm curious about some of the amenities like the dog park and the corner park. Would, would that be done possibly this year with the same phase as the townhomes? Or is that gonna come next year as well?
This is Goll again. I've been pushing to get the dog park put in right away. It was about two years ago, we added pets, and people love pets, too. They love Southfield, love pets, so the dog park would be a really nice amenity. There's a lot of people walking around with different pets, and I would like to get that pet park in as soon as possible because I don't believe it interferes with any of the rest of the construction. But based on this meeting, we will, we will right away get with the property manager and the landscaper and do some drawings for it.
All right, sounds good, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments, staff can make a recommendation if you're ready for that.
Yep, I'm ready. I don't hear any other comments, so go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. With regard to PZRODD 21-0001, the planning department does make a favorable recommendation to amend the existing ODD overlay development district development agreement, to amend the existing 2016 ODD agreement for the Arbor Lofts property to allow for the conversion of three carports to apartments, an 11-unit garage port structure, two new carport structures on the north side of the existing building, small dog park off the northeast corner of the building, 12 to 36 stacked multiple family units, two to three stories in height on the north side of the property, similar to the previous ODD, but a different layout for, for the over, for the Arbor Lofts building with underlying RC regional center for 5.21 acres of land for the following reasons. Proposal will be consistent with the surrounding zoning classifications and is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan that indicates city center sub area for this parcel. Proposal utilizing the ODD overlay development district provisions with underlying RC regional center zoning will allow the petitioner to market the properties for redevelopment with mixed-use land uses compatible with abutting existing development and will allow for the development flexibility in accordance with the attached amended ODD development agreement. And proposed rezoning will not have adverse effects upon the adjoining zonings or land uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertainer motion?
Through the chair, Commissioner Huntington?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for favorable approval for PZRODD 21-0001.
This is Commissioner Willis, I support.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Huntington, supported by Commissioner Willis, a favorable motion. We have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
And Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you have a favorable recommendation for PZRODD 21-0001.
Excellent, thank you, and good luck on the project.
Thank you so much. When should we anticipate the city council?
Yeah, we would be, yeah, we'd be looking at a May 3rd. Before the planning, before the city council at a study meeting, and then the 24th for the regular meeting.
These are WebEx, I'm assuming?
Yes, and you will be receiving an invite from the city clerk on that.
Thanks, Jeff, thank you, Terry, thank you, members of the commission.
Yeah, and Peter, I think there was just some outstanding landscaping issues that if you could follow up with Jeff next week on, you want to get those tightened up before the public. Thank you.
Okay, will do. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have PZRUDD 19-0001.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the request for residential unit development district. The petitioner is the Southfield Community Renewal Corporation, property located 18330 George Washington. This is on a northeast corner of George Washington and Continental. Property is zoned R4 single-family residential, and as I noted, the rezoning request is to create a residential unit development district on this property. This may look familiar to you. This actually came before you for the first time back in 2019, and since that time, the petitioner has been working on revised plans for this particular site. A lot of those due to comments that have been made by the public and others with regard to making amendments and changes to the plan itself. This is a closer view of the property. The, the school, existing school building itself is on the west side of the property. The other building adjacent to the east is actually a portable classroom. That would be removed, and then the rest of the area is green space. Just want to remind the planning commissioners that your review of the RUDD is based on certain items, so their development standards and requirements. Uh, so there are development standards and requirements for approval, and these are the things that you need to focus on. Uh, conformance with the residential unit development district concept, compatibility with adjacent uses such as architectural integrity, height setbacks, density, parking, circulation, infrastructure, landscaping, views, and other design and layout features, along with the relationship of the development to surrounding properties. Uh, access to major thoroughfares, estimated traffic to be generated, uh proximity in relation to intersections, uh adequacy of driver site distance, location of and access to off-street parking, required vehicular turns, provisions for pedestrian connection, uh circulation, access and connection to non-motorized pathways and public transit. Now also look at protection for natural environment, compatibility with the future land use plan, and then compliance with the applicable applicable regulations, excuse me. Uh, the property itself, uh current zoning, as I noted, R four, single-family residential. Future land use map shows moderate density, single-family. This is the proposed site plan that would be part of the ODD. Um, phase one basically remains the same as was originally proposed back in two thousand nineteen. Eighteen residential units, uh condominiums uh within the school building, removal of the temporary portable structure. Uh, inside the the existing school, there would be nine one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, and three three-bedroom units. Phase two uh would include the construction of eleven two-story, two-family, side-by-side residential condominiums uh in eleven buildings, and there would be twenty-two of those units. They would be three-bedroom units ranging in size from eighteen hundred to two, over two thousand square feet. This is a comparison between what was proposed back in two thousand nineteen and then the new overlay development or the the new uh proposal for twenty twenty-one. Uh, you can see the school building remain the same. Um, the single-family attached unit uh is twenty-eight. Parking required. Total parking one hundred and twenty-one. For the two thousand twenty-one plan, again, the the school remains the same at eighteen units. Um, the new single-family attached on the east side goes down to twenty-two, so we actually reduce by six units from twenty-eight to twenty-two. And the parking required uh is one hundred and eighteen instead of one twenty-one. And they also include bike parking for uh bike parking on the property. Landscape plan for the proposal. And phase one would be the construction or the uh the redo of the existing school along with garages on the north side of that. The phase two portion, phase one would actually, this would all become green space on the east side of the property. And so again, the removal of the existing portable classroom and then the rest of the property would would be seeded, uh and it would just become green space for the time being. Elevations for the school. First floor plan showing the units. This is the second floor. These are the garages that are proposed on the north side, uh north of the existing school building. And then these are the attached single-family units. There are four total. Uh, each one is is a little, is a little different in in how it looks. So you have uh unit type one, type two, type three. And there's another one of type four. Uh, these are the uh floor plans for each of those individual units. The ground floor plan as well as the upper floor plan. For the type-two unit, what those would look like. The type-three units and what those would look like both on ground floor and upper floor. And then finally, type-four unit with their floor plan. These are what the the townhouses look like. This is a proposal from two thousand nineteen. So these were the units that were going to be on the east side uh originally, and these were what those particular units look like. And these are the renderings of the proposed project. Uh, on the left-hand side, you can see the school building. On the right-hand side, you can see those um two-family units and what those would look like, and this is looking from George Washington. So the school building from Continental, so you're looking south. So these are the garage units and then the school building beyond. And then the interior facilities, the common room, a typical living room within, and this is within the school building. And with that, um, staff doesn't have any more comments at this time. Uh, Mr. John Abella is online uh this evening uh to provide some further information uh on this proposal to the Commission and any public that are listening uh or watching on TV.
Okay, uh, go ahead, John, if you could just introduce yourself and give us a little more information about the project.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Abella. I'm the Director of Design for SDG Associates with the architect record for this project. I'd just say good evening to everyone. Uh, I also want to acknowledge that we have Corey Moffett, who's the Chair of the Southfield Community Development. I believe he's on the phone. Wesley Sims, our CFO and CO of SDG Associates, and also Tricia DiMarco, who's our engineer and planner with Spalding De Decker. Um, as you know, you know, SDG is the oldest and longest-running black-owned architectural firm in the state of Michigan. It was founded by Howard Sims in nineteen sixty-four. And since that time, you know, the firm's taken pride in providing sensitive, quality-driven, site-specific design solutions to our clients. And this plan and site design that we prepared for the existing belighted McKinley School Site is respectful to the community, the neighborhood, the existing historic structure, and the city of Southfield's RUDD guidelines. And since our first meetings and outreach events with the residents and planning, we have listened and responded with a design that has addressed concerns regarding density, traffic, parking, green space, community space, and can scale. We responded to density. Uh, we have, we have reduced the number of units. In fact, our original design had fifty-seven residential units, and now we're at forty. Uh, traffic was reduced by a large amount. Uh, when it, when it was a school at at max under full occupancy was about eight hundred and fourteen trips daily from that or from the site. Residentially, now we'd be at around three hundred and forty trips. That's a reduction of almost five hundred trips per day. We also believe that the typical path of travel will be east on George Washington to Southfield Road and then north on Continental to uh Ten Mile. Along with that, we have, again, listening to what our, what our neighbors have said is the parking that we had proposed along George Washington has been removed. Subsequently, uh, there is more green space and, you know, the green, the green space uh was really developed two ways. One, by less parking means offering more, more, more green space to the site. And also the less density of, the less dense the buildings are. So we've afforded more, more green space on the site as well. Uh, we've offering community space. Uh, in the renovated kindergarten space, it's going to serve as a community room for both the residents of McKinley Place and the residents of the Washington Heights neighborhood. And then the scale of the, of the buildings, uh, you know, the single-family attached residences, while reflective of the two-door style, also adhered to the proportional characteristics of the single-family residence. And I just want to make a point very, very clear that none of these are rental units. These forty residents are are for sale. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, any other comments from staff at this time, or do we go to the public?
I I just, I'd like the uh John to just um discuss the unit size that's proposed versus what the typical units are on the single-family in the neighborhood. And then if you could just give a range on the price point that these may, you know, may sell at before we we open it up to the public.
Thank you, Terry. Um, the uh, the unit sizes for the, for the single-family attached are between eighteen hundred and 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 twenty-two hundred. We did a survey of the area, and we found a, a majority of the housing stock was in the twenty-two hundred to twenty-five hundred square foot range, with some going as high as, I believe, fifty-four hundred and, you know, some at twelve to fourteen hundred. So we're, we're about average for the, for the housing stock within the George Washington neighborhood. Uh, the price point is probably between three hundred and three seventy-five, so it's about market rate for that.
Okay, I, I just wanted, I, you know, I just wanted you to provide some context because um this, the, the style's a little bit different than what people perceptions are. So with that, through the chair, I'll turn it back over to you if you want to open the public hearing.
Okay, uh, this is a public hearing. We'll open up uh the public hearing at this time. Um, as we said in the beginning of the meeting, each person, uh, please state their name and address for the record, and you have three minutes per comment. And Jeff, if you could, I don't know, try to filter people in order or in some kind of order. That would be helpful.
Yeah, if I may through the chair, that that's a little difficult to do. Um, I do know that we have a large number of people on the attendee list. Um, a number of them are currently shown as muted on their side. Uh, so again, we can just take people one at a time. Um, there may be a little bit of overlap. Um, but if you do have a comment uh to make on this particular item, um, we ask again that you give your name and address for the record, and then go ahead, and you will have three minutes to make your comment. So again, public, if you do have comments on this, now is your time.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I have a comment.
Hello?
Now everybody at once, okay.
Yeah, again, we'll need to, we'll need to take them one at a time.
Hello? Hello?
Okay, you're, you're first. Uh, please state your name and address. Yes.
Hello, yes, my name is Tanya Page Coleman. My address is eighteen-four-three-nine George Washington Drive. I'm also a real estate agent with Keller Williams Realty. And so my concern is with the actual school buildings and turning those into units. Uh, you said some of those would be small units for, I I'm just not clear on that because what the major concern is that they turn into rental properties and to lower the value of our properties. Now, what you said with the three hundred thousand dollar range sounds very good. But we want to make sure that our property value does not decrease and that there is not too much traffic and noise. Uh, concerned about undesirable residents. The project is done as you have explained, then that will take care of that. But my concern still is what's gonna go on in that school building as far as residential? Would that be uh, uh, what, like for sale, that as well? Or would those be something different than the single-family residential homes?
This, this is Planner Crode. We're gonna take all public comment. We'll, we'll take some notes, and then we'll try to respond to the questions after all the public comment has been completed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
This is, this is Karen Ledford, L E D F O R D. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Karen.
Okay, I'm at one-eight-seven-five-six capital. Um.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your address, please?
One, one-eight-seven-five-six capital.
Capital, okay, thank you very much.
Um, I was wondering, how can we get a copy of the rezoning, all of the printed information that you have shown about this project? Because I can't hardly, I have large TVs, and everything is still blurry um and unclear, especially the information about the rezoning request. And I'd like to know how far along you are on the rezoning request. And um, I feel bad that we cannot go, we can't see it on the TV. We can't go into the building department to look at, at the plans. We have no way uh, um, paying any written down information that you're showing on the screen so that we can go over it ourselves. Because this has changed since uh the city services have been closed because of COVID. Uh, that, that is my main concern. Um, and I also think it's about time for us, and I know people have different feelings, and I know that I looked online and it said now we're not opening to June the first. But based on our previous uh meetings uh in that auditorium, I think everybody can be well beyond six feet. I mean, they can really spread out. And the planning committee, commission can spread out upper tier, lower tier because it's unfair for us to have to go through all this. You're building a multimillion-dollar uh, or you want to, structure in our neighborhood, and we're really feeling kind of cheated because we don't really have access. We really can't see too much from the TV, the television, and I have a high-def, large-screen TV. And um, I couldn't even, I couldn't even read, get the zone information, uh, numbers. So that's my concern. And um, I wasn't clear. Could you please explain again what the entrances? I'm looking at it on TV. And where you enter, where the entrance points to the development. Um, and um, again, I would like some way mainly to be able to see something in person. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. There is um, all this information is on the city website. Terry, do you think you, we could uh quickly summarize where people can find it if they're on the list?
Yeah, we're, we'll, we'll do this after um, after the public hearing, and I'll, I'll make some suggestions how you can contact our office, and we can share this information digitally. But really quickly, if you go to the city's website, to the Planning Department homepage, there's an interactive map that you can click on uh in this location, and it'll pull up um these graphics for you. But um, given the fact that uh we're closed to the public, we do have a vestibule Dropbox um that we could leave information for you. Or um, probably the easiest way is you contact the planning department's main number, uh, two-four-eight-seven-nine-six-four-one-five-zero. We could uh provide this PowerPoint presentation to you digitally um by email. Uh, so you can either email us or call us, but we, we will make an extra effort if you like this information that was presented. Um, we will share that with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment?
This is Yehuda Kleiner. May I go ahead?
Yeah, um, just again, state your name and address for the record first.
Yehuda Kleiner, one-six-seven-five-zero, Sherfield Place, Southfield, Michigan.
Go ahead, just turn down your TV. There's, it sounds like there's some feedback. There's a slight delay.
I, I, yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm involved in the real estate industry and housing. I've done many houses and sold many houses in Southfield. And I feel that this property development will enhance the area, enhance the values. And in addition, I think it would not be cost prohibitive for someone to rent out these units at this cost basis. To pay three hundred thousand dollars or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and rent a unit out, you would not get enough money to make it worth it as a rental. So I happen to think that it's great for the community. The values will go up. It'll create a new uh attraction to the area, and it'll increase values. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Here, any other comments from the public?
Good evening, my name is Perrin Emanuel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, my, my first name is Perrin, last name is Emanuel, I'm a twenty year resident at two three two seven zero Laurel Valley in Southfield. And I'm also the chair of the Southfield Building Authority, but I was calling tonight to support this project. I am a Realtor as well in, in the Detroit area, and part of the issue is that we don't have enough diversity in our housing for older residents who are now looking to downsize. And so I encourage the planning commission to take a look at a project similar to this called the St. Charles Residences at fourteen five four Townsend on the east side of Detroit, that are condos that would probably another example of a retrofit of a school, school building that is now turned into condos, and those are for sale over there right off of West East Graham Boulevard in St. Paul. And again, I encourage this project. It is looking to downsize, and I don't have many alternatives to, um, to go to.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, yep, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Ms. Beal, and the last name is B E A L. My address is one eight one seven six New Jersey Drive. And the, um, I'm calling in to say no to the rezoning. And the reason why I say I'm listening in and I'm hearing that getting feedback from Realtors and, and, um, the property development people, and so I can hear where there's money on the table.
Ma'am, ma'am, Ms. Beal? Ms. Beal, can I just ask everybody if you're not speaking to go on mute, because we're getting a lot of background noise? Someone has their TV on, please go to mute or turn your volume down on your TV, please. Go ahead, Ms. Beal.
Okay, thank you. So I say, um, no, as I was stating, um, the Washington Heights, um, subdivision was a quiet, single family, that was the reason why we moved into this area, because it didn't have, um, you know, it was in a high volume area, and so several of us are not in agreement with putting condos and duplexes. Regardless to the fact of how you try to beautify them or what blend them in or whatever, we just do not feel that that's an appropriate space project for this area. There's plenty of, um, commercial, um, space that's out on more trafficable streets rather than squashing them in over here into our subdivision. We like the tranquility of our subdivision, and we feel money can be made somewhere else other than here within our subdivision. And so that's what I'm calling in. I don't feel that we need to put that here just because we have a vacant building at the, um, school, that that has to be included in as, um, making it into condos and duplexes. It's my understanding that there could be a increase in my homeowner's insurance, so I see money going into developers' and Realtors' pockets, but then I have to pay the cost. I have to live with higher insurance rates, lose the tranquility of our area, and I don't know if it's true or not, but I was hearing that it could cause our, um, my property value to change, and not in a good way. So to me, it just looks, doesn't look like a win-win for us who are longtime residents. I don't know if I mentioned it, I've been living here twenty years, and I wanted to keep it the way that it is, so I'm saying no to the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead, please state your name and address and just make sure your computer, uh, TV's turned on.
Okay, my name is Margaret Parker, and I live at eighteen three two one Stratford Drive in Washington Heights subdivision. I have lived here for forty-two years. My children went to school here. This is a very nice residential, single family home, um, subdivision. I do not, I am against rezoning for duplexes, for condos, et cetera. Uh, that property over there for McKinley High School, McKinley Elementary School, um, to me is not conducive for duplexes and, um, and condominiums. I would not be in objection if it were going to be single family homes like the one that I've been living in for forty-two years. I am against rezoning. And I'm also concerned about my property taxes going down. I'm also concerned about undesirable people in my neighborhood, because when you get a variety, unfortunately, this is true, when you get a variety of folk coming into the neighborhood, moving in, they may not have the same interests that I have and my neighbors have. Most of my neighbors in my block have been here for over thirty years. I am against rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, state your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Ray Townsell, I live at two four six five three Lafayette Circle. I am in support of this project. I think that the current site is an eyesore every time I drive past it, and I would welcome some new developments and new neighbors, and I think we would be able to deal with the traffic. And I'm not sure that we can determine what kind of people are gonna move in the place, I'm sure they'll be just fine, so I'm in support of this project.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, state your name and address.
My name is Corey Moffett, I live at two five two five nine Ingleside Drive in Southfield, and I am in support of the McKinley project. I think it's a great enhancement to the city of Southfield. It will actually improve property taxes and property values in that particular area. It's the type of community that people are starting to look for, especially when you look at millennials and younger people that Southfield does need to move forward in the future, to start moving into those communities. We've had a lot of support for people.
Go field out there somewhere.
Looking for something that they can actually downsize to in terms of a nice suburban type condominium that they have in the surrounding communities. So I think this is actually a great opportunity in Southfield to be able to redevelop the school and add you to those particular neighbors in that particular area.
Okay, thank you, Corey.
Chair, this is Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Please ask the people to turn their TVs down and mute when they're not speaking so we can hear clearly.
That's a great idea. Everybody, if you're not speaking, please, please go on mute, and just remember there's a delay between the, your call and the broadcast, so you have to turn your TV down, or we hear too much feedback and we cannot state your comments. Go ahead, ma'am, state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm at two four four zero six Connecticut Drive in Washington Heights. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Ma'am, could you just restate your name, please?
Vivian Webb, two four four zero six Connecticut.
Thank you.
Okay, I live in Washington Heights. Going in to say no to the rezoning. As some of the other people have said, the reason we moved into Washington Heights is because of its quiet and tranquility, and I like it like that. And I'm hearing, I was listening to Ms. Beal, and really, she said everything that I feel. I'm opposed to the rezoning, the traffic will be horrendous, and it's not a rental area. We live in a residential area, and I think it should stay that way. Thank you.
Hello?
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Alicia May Light, I live at two four six eight seven Martha Washington Drive. And I just wanted to say for the record that I also am not in support of this project. I did participate in one of the meetings back in two thousand nineteen to hear what the rezoning. I guess one of my biggest concerns is, you know, again, with the same concerns everyone else has stated on here, is just the negative impact associated with, um, the project where we may have more people, undesirables, um, you know, just also looking at will there, you know, be any changes to the property taxes? I just moved to this home, um, a little less than three years ago, and I almost wished if I had known about this prior to, I probably would not have moved to Southfield. And so that's so unfortunate. I love the area, um, you know, and constantly did drive bys just to see the neighbors and just see how beautiful the community is. And again, I'm just really not in support of this rezoning project. I do not want the noise. I moved here because I would love to retire in Southfield, um, which obviously was not the community or the city that I had lived in prior. And so, you know, just getting up in age, I, I really thought that this was going to be, you know, my end all for moving again. And so I just wanted to voice my opinion, and hopefully we'll be able to get any, you know, questions answered later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello? Hello? My name is Louis Jefferson. Can you hear me?
Yeah, please state your address, and can you state your name again also?
My name is Louis Jefferson. My address is eighteen four four zero George Washington, right next to McKinley School at the corner of Continental. I'm too, uh, against this rezoning. Uh, I know for a fact that taxes will go up, I know for a fact that insurance is gonna go up, and there's no telling who will be moving in these rental properties that you guys are talking about building. Um, all the traffic that's gonna be on Continental, that's gonna be twenty-four seven traffic. See, because when McKinley School was there and doing their business, we had traffic in the morning, and we had traffic in the evening when the folks were picking up their kids, but we're talking about traffic twenty-four seven, and there's no telling who's gonna be living over there. And I'm comfortable here, but you folks is gonna have me moving out of here. I've been living here over twenty-eight years.
No, we ain't moving nowhere.
And I do not wanna move, and I do not want this rezoning. And I would like to meet with the mayor and their people face to face, and we can talk about this thing.
All the traffic is all around here right now. And this is his wife, my name is Gwendol. I have MS. It's already enough traffic as it is from people coming through the subdivision that live here, in addition to the people that are outside of the, uh, the subdivision that take shortcuts around here. We have, we have, uh, uh, people running through the ditch, so no, I am definitely against this rezoning. And I would like to know if we could all have a meeting with the mayor and take our concerns to him.
There you go.
Once and for all.
Thank you.
Scratch this one, I'm saying rezoning and also to speak to the mayor to scratch this off any development, uh, company's list. Do not come over here, you, Washington Heights, don't even ask, because they don't want.
Okay, thank you both.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, my name is David Clement, I live at, uh, eighteen eight four zero Capital Drive in the Washington Heights subdivision. Real briefly, I've been a resident in Washington Heights subdivision since nineteen eighty-five, and it has pretty much maintained itself. Um, I've noticed some changes, like when you come in on Lee Baker off of Northwestern Highway, you guys allowed him to put a dumpster almost facing someone's house, which I think is preposterous. I am totally against this rezoning as well. I don't wanna be on this phone long-winded. I just hope that you guys understand the, uh, concern that the residents here in Washington Heights have, and I hope you guys consider that, and I'll thank you for your time.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Odetta Burr, and I live at eighteen four two zero New Hampshire Drive. And I am against this rezoning. My husband and my family been here almost twelve years.
Odetta, you're, uh, you're trailing off there, you gotta, there's some feedback.
Hello, try it again, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, again, Odetta Burr, my address is one eight four two zero New Hampshire Drive, and my family been living in Washington Heights for almost twelve years, and we are against the rezoning. Um, uh, you can make a park, but we think that it'll make the community louder, traffic ring through nonstop, and we're about, maybe about six feet from the place where they're talking about building. So we are totally against the rezoning. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Thank you, uh, go, go ahead, state your name and address.
My name is Molly Memm, can you hear me?
Yes, got your name, um, state your address, please.
Ma'am, just hold on, again, I, to the public, we are getting too much feedback, please mute your phones if you're not speaking, it's not fair to the other speakers. We wanna be able to hear your comments, we cannot hear if the TV's on and you're not on mute. I'm asking again, please be respective of the other speakers. Go ahead, ma'am.
Five three one Capital Drive on the corner of Capital and Continental. The, the name is Memm, can you hear me?
Yes.
I live behind the, um, the, um, owners that called in just a few minutes ago, um, the Lewis and family, and we both are going through a, there's a lot of traffic on Continental continuously, all night long. It was like that when the school was there. I had many problems with the school there, the, um, the parents. I had, they were, the people, even the people that worked in the school, I had problems with them coming onto my property, smoking and putting cigarette ashes in my yard. I don't wanna have the same problem over there, and I'm against the zoning. And I'm also having a problem with my driveway right across from their, the driveway of the school. I'm the only house who has the driveway right across from the school. I can't hardly, I'm probably not gonna be able to back out my driveway until all the traffic clears. It's too much traffic, and people run the stop sign constantly. Three times I have almost been hit with that stop sign, people running the stop sign. I am against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, my name, my name is Alex Vincent, I live at eighteen eight three nine Addison Drive. I live at eighteen eight three nine Addison Drive. And my, my, my issue is, is that this was proposed in twenty nineteen, and now it's being proposed in twenty twenty-one during a pandemic where we can't really have a public face-to-face meeting and then, and the, and the city council with the mayor's office? This is what is, this is what's bothering me right now. It's like this is trying to be, like, pretty much like, 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 to be snuck under the table. I don't, I don't appreciate it at all. And this is, in my opinion, it's just wrong. It's just, it, it's, it's not proper. How about that? I don't say it's wrong, it's not proper for the residents here in Washington Heights. This is a quiet, peaceful, beautiful neighborhood. Beautiful neighborhood, and I do not want that. And just like Tanya, Karen, Ms. Beal, Jefferson, David, everyone who lives around, who lives in close proximity to this, to the school, you're right, Capital Drive is a lot of traffic going there. And, and, and this will just increase it. And I am a hundred percent against it. And if it comes to taking a petition to go out and run the neighborhood, to get folks to sign it, I am willing to do that. I am a hundred percent against it. It's just that simple.
Okay, thank you. Any more callers?
Yes.
Go ahead, name and address, please.
My name is Betty Smith. My address is one eight six one one Capital Drive. As other, everyone else has said, we really wanna live in Southfield too. We don't wanna give up the tranquility about that. That being said, we are asking that the planning commission wait to rezone this area because we would like to meet with the mayor and the architects at the school site.
We don't need to meet with them about nothing. Don't give them no way out. We don't need to meet with them about nothing. Go look for some land somewhere else.
I think we need to discuss that too. Um, Ms. Jefferson, I think we need to discuss that too. Everything needs to be discussed. And we need to meet as homeowners on the site, as I said, so we can get a visual outside on a very nice sunny warm day and discuss everything that's being pushed down our throats. We just don't wanna feel like we have no part in this, no say-so. The dog part is getting more respect than we're getting in determining what's happening in our own community. We just wanna be heard. We wanna be a part of it. We want to have good neighbors and we wanna be good neighbors. But that area is only five acres. And to put forty homes and the dumpsters and the trash and the stench that's gonna come with that, it's a lot of concern. And we really, really need to meet and let everyone come to the site who's interested. And I think that's only fair, that we do that. I understand changes have been made. We can't tell. We can't see that in the visual sitting at home. But we can get more information and have more of an understanding if we actually go to the site. And I just ask that you not vote on the rezoning today and give us a chance to understand and get a better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes.
Uh, can I speak? I'm, I'm with her. We're, we're sitting in the room together and, um...
Okay, just give us your name and if it's the same address.
John, at, at one eight one one Capital Drive, Southfield, New Hampshire.
Okay.
Did you hear me? Okay, um...
Yes.
I, um, you know, I've been here twenty-three years. We've been here twenty-three years and, um, I have put a lot of money in my property. A lot of money. And one of your board members inspired me, um, this gun, she inspired me to fix my property up and make it what it is, I hope it is today. Um, you know, um, what I'm saying here is that I, I, um, I just wanna, I'm getting old. I'm, I just turned sixty-six. I gotta, I gotta keep that in mind. I'm sixty-six. I'm getting older and I can't, you know, my eyesight might be gone, my ears, whatever. I, when we put a, a complex like that down the street, you know, I'm out doing my lawn all the time. And, um, I don't, my, um, a friend of mine got in a big accident, um, two weeks ago. It killed a guy, motorcycle driver. It was on TV. Um, you know, uh, motorcycles, cars, they got all these fast cars and stuff, and they ride down the street. And this is a quiet neighborhood. This is quiet. You know, I see people walking their dogs late at night. And, and it, it is, to, to bring a apartment complex into a neighborhood like this is atrocious. I would, I think that is, i- is atrocious. And I just want a voice no to rezoning. And, and we care more about the dog part. I heard more, last week, I heard more about the dog part than I did about our, our resi-, you know, this resident, Washington Heights people. We're not even getting any respect. We've been trying to meet with the mayor since last two ye-, a year, year, when it first came up. And he won't meet with us. When we, when he came to the Washington Heights meeting, he was shaken because of people, when he heard about this project, he had it all made out. We didn't know nothing about it. But we just wanna be heard. We're, we're, you know, we got the Black Lives Matter second-class citizens now. Everybody, you know, we wanna be heard and we gonna fight for our rights. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, uh, state your name and address, please.
Yes, my, my name is Margaret Royal. I reside at one eight five five zero George Washington Drive. Um, I join with all of the other Washington Heights subdivision, uh, residents regarding, uh, my ob- objecting to the rezoning. I truly believe that the project, the way that it's been presented, will truly destroy the bucolic, beautiful, peaceful nature of our community. I have viewed this subdivision as kind of a quiet little sleepy hollow. And what they are now planning on doing will completely destroy the essence and beauty of the subdivision. I would strongly suggest to the commission that they vote no to this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to... Can you hear me?
Next caller? Yep, go ahead.
Deborah Marshall, one eight eight nine four Capital Drive. As well. And especially considering they told us this was for, for, uh, those that were being sold, like homes. And, um, instead, we're talking again. And we are too much of a, a nice knit community to be rezoned for this position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next caller, please.
If anyone else would like to speak during the public voting?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead with your name and address.
Uh, I'm sorry. My name is Eric Burr. I live at one eight four two zero New Hampshire Drive. And I stand with the rest of the New Ha-, uh, Washington Heights residents as being opposed to this, um, proposed plan. I'm standing outside looking at the school now. And we're already getting people, uh, taking shortcuts through this area, uh, trying to beat the traffic. I think it's interesting that our, uh, residents outside of Washington Heights is, is good with this or the real estate agencies are, uh, rubbing their hands together to get money for this. But we're the ones that's gonna have to deal with this when it's all said and done. Uh, I am just totally against it and I, I'm tired. We've been here twelve years and I don't want this swept away like you did with the weed issue at Northland Drive that y'all passed some things through, um, without us knowing about it, without having any word or any say-so. So once again, I am totally against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Devon Owens. My address is one eight seven two five Capital Drive. And I too am against the rezoning for this project in our area. Um, it, I know we've been requesting to meet, um, regarding this project to voice our concern. Um, it's just very unfortunate that we have not been able to do that. And I just don't think it's fair for the residents here. Um, you know, we live in this community. We're the ones that have to be here. We're the ones that would have to suffer the repercussions of whatever would happen as a result of this project. And it just doesn't seem that our voices are being heard or our thoughts and feelings about where we live are being taken into consideration. So I would ask that this just be put on hold until we can...
No, don't put it on hold.
With the mayor and if we can meet to see what's going on so that we can put input in it too. Because it's not fair that we have not been able to do that. And I know I've been to pretty much all the meetings regarding this project. It's fair that the individuals that live in this community are not a part of what's gonna be put in the community. And all the amenities and things that are going into this project, it has nothing to do with us. It won't be any benefit to us, but we will suffer all the repercussions. And I think that it's just unfair that we have not been able to be a part of this project. And I think that we need to be a part of it to decide what needs to be done to the school as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, hi, this is Tanya Morris. I live at one eight five eight one Capital Drive. And, um, on March two, there was an article that was published in the Southfield Sun, uh, saying south will see residents' responses on housing issues for local farms. And it was referring to... And that's a good thing because it's important to include residents on planning decisions that are being made in their neighborhood. And it was really nice to hear that the residents of Arborloft Apartments heard, were, were heard. Their views and opinions were taken into considerations about the development changes in their apartments. And, and so I just wanted to say that we, the residents of Washington Heights, have not been given that same opportunity as it relates to the McKinley School project. You know, when the mayor, uh, Mayor Cyber first presented his vision, his vision for our neighborhood to us in twenty nineteen, he asked a lot of questions, many of which he didn't have the answers to. So we got our proj-, the project put on hold. But I recall that city councilwoman Lenny, Lenny Taylor recommended that he meet with us. Perhaps maybe some of you did as well on the commission so that we could have our questions answered and, and, uh, hear more, um, uh, about the project and, and take our ideas and concerns to him. Now, it's a year and a half later and the project just pops up and we still haven't met with the mayor. So we don't really clearly understand what has changed the project was first presented in twenty nineteen. You know, back then, the numbers didn't add up regarding the financing and the number of units proposed. So it looks like you guys cut the units down. We were told that there would be condos, but then we heard that were gonna be apartments. We asked for a density report or a traffic study to be done. And we all know that on average, Southfield residents have two cars per household. That's eighty cars traveling in and out of our neighborhood and additional eighty cars every day. And there's only forty parking spaces that are shown on the plan. I, I don't know how you get eighty cars in forty spaces. And what about their friends and family that visit? Uh, I don't know where they're supposed to park. Um, it's, it's, it's just not enough parking. And, and this increased traffic and pollution is gonna disturb the safety and tranquility of our neighborhood. Now, if we residents can have the opportunity to get input on a park, residents of Southfield, if apartment dwellers can have the opportunity to get input on development, why are we, the residents of Washington Heights, being denied that opportunity? To get input on a housing project that's gonna impede upon our neighborhood? It's, it's just not right. And to me, it's a blatant abuse of power by Mayor Cyber. I don't believe this project is ready to be advanced to the city council. There are too many unanswered questions and the residents' voices matter. We deserve to be heard. I, I, I just respectfully request that the planning commission just place this matter on hold. I know one of my mayors don't want, my neighbors don't wanna put it on hold, but I think it needs to be put on hold until the mayor meets with the residents of Washington Heights. This project is a big deal and it should just, does not be pushed through because the mayor wants it to be. Thank you.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, hello. Uh, good, good, good evening, everyone. My name is Warren McAlpine. My address is two six six seven seven West Twelve Mile Road in Southfield. I've been a member of this community for the better part of twenty-five years. I've had offices, matter of fact, I had an office that, uh, was adjacent to the Washington Heights, uh, subdivision. I have friends and family whom, uh, uh, you know, care about and love, who, uh, live in the Washington Heights, uh, subdivision. I've spent a lot of time there. I know the nature of that community, uh, how it was, uh, at least the initial, uh, intent of the developers as stated, as far as, uh, uh, quiet and tranquil neighborhood. Uh, I'm not opposed to development. Saying that's it, I'm not opposed to development. And what proposed for that area would probably be great on the riverfront or on a large tract of land somewhere in Southfield. Uh, but to try to pigeonhole, to try to put a square peg into a round hole in that small area would be devastating. Uh, obviously, money is always a factor. Politics is, is obviously at the top of the list as well. But to, it would be a disservice and it would be a disgrace to, uh, jam that type of project into that neighborhood, to force that type of project into that neighborhood. And the detriment, not just, uh, from a psychological standpoint, you know, how people would feel about it, mostly how they would feel about it, but just the financial, uh, loss that would take place is unacceptable. This definitely should, uh, I would, I'm a, I would be opposed to it. Uh, maybe there's some other, uh, alternatives. There's some, uh, have suggested single-family homes. But the as-proposed condos, uh, again, the number of units, the number of people, uh, that would, uh, occupy those units would not, uh, fall in line with the original intent of the developers of the community nor the wishes of the, of residents. So I would, uh, oppose the, uh, development on this case.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Beverly. I'm at one eight seven seven zero Capital Drive. I'd like to know how many units will be rented out? And if the, uh... Hello?
Are you okay? There was a beeping noise in the background there?
It wasn't from my area.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to know, uh, those rented units. How many are there to be rented out? And if the condos have, uh, garages or not? One car or two car garage? Because that doesn't appear to be enough parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Richelle Snow, two four four five Lee Baker Drive. I oppose the rezoning. And I'm also, I have a complaint about a trash can that's right next door to our home. There's a business next door and, um, there's a dumpster right next door to our home and there's plenty of squirrels. They just put it there. And, um, I've had the Southfield Police on several occasions because even the parking has become ridiculous. They blocked my mailbox and I can't receive mail for two to three days. But I'm opposing the, uh, rezoning. And, um, that was one of my other concerns about the trash can and parking on our street. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Yes. This is Tanya Page calling again, eighteen four three nine George Washington. It's just too much traffic to do anything, uh, with that school site. It's just entirely too much traffic. It's already way too much traffic. I live right across the street from Jefferson. I window peek through the school. And so, it's, people are always feeding down the street as it is. As I'm backing out of my driveway, I'm almost hit multiple times every day and it's just too much. And as everyone else has said, you all cannot out, uh, meeting with us first and giving us the opportunity because none of you all that are proposing to push this through live over here and have to deal with this. And so, this is not fair. It's not right. And again, none of you all have to live over here. We already have enough traffic to deal with in this small intersection. So, you all need to vote no on this. Put it on the back burner. Find another way. But that's not the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can keep the court as a guilty and whatever consequence because they're gonna go up and change our property taxes and all kinds of other stuff gonna go on and change the...
Jeff, do we have any other, any other callers?
Hello?
Could you tell how many more we're looking at?
Um, we have a lot of, if I may, through the chair, um, there are a lot of people who have remained on. Um, they're, they're phones, so I'm just, I'm trying to manage the best that I can here, um, those who might be trying to talk over others or, or saying other statements. Um, so, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, you know, who else would like to make a comment, uh...
Oh, okay. I, I would, I would, I would like to make another one. This is still, uh, the chair...
If, if I, if I may through the chair, I mean, the, the public is, you're allowed your three minutes and if you've already spoken, you know, it'll be up to the chair if he wants to recognize you again, but generally, you get that one portion at three minutes.
Okay, I didn't, I know I didn't...
Yeah, just hoping to keep some order, Jeff, because we're, we're getting obviously a lot of repeats or a lot of, uh, agreement, which is fine. But, um, without, you know, us being able to see who's talking, it's, it's really difficult to discern.
It is.
We're going back and, you know, back over and over and over and over again.
Yeah, and I, this is Planner Crowe. If there's someone who hasn't spoken, we wanna make sure that we, everyone gets a chance to speak.
Okay.
So, other, other than that, if there's someone who hasn't spoken...
Hello?
Oh, I think somebody probably has their, uh, uh, thing unmuted.
Yeah, so it's like we have a new caller. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Can you hear me?
Are you talk...
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. No, this is, uh... Hello?
Well, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Ms. Jefferson again that's on George Washington. And you told me I had spoke my three minutes, but the only thing I wanted to add was for all the people that said that they think that it's a good, uh, project, they need to live where I live because I live, I'm living right across the street from that school. And that's all I got to say about that.
All right, uh, we, it sounded like, uh, callers ready. I missed your first name.
You know, Jay Mendoza?
Okay, go ahead.
I'm at two four four eight two Lee Baker Drive. Um, as you see, most of the residents here are opposed to this development and rezoning. Um, when we moved here 12, 15 years ago, it was peaceful, quiet. Most of my neighbors been ladies. And we love the way that the neighborhood is, is quiet, peaceful. People were right down the street. You know who your neighbors are. You know who don't belong here. By me living on Lee Baker, when there was construction on the, uh, Service Drive, we got all the flow of traffic of people taking shortcuts. So, Lee Baker is the gateway to get to Capital Drive, to get to that new construction you're trying to do. We have kids. You know, I have a little one that likes to play in the front. We have a huge front yard. The kids and the dogs love to play in the front yard. So, normal traffic is, is none, but there's any kind of construction, then we gotta worry about the construction workers, the trucks. Forty units, like they say, it's gonna be 80 plus cars. That's a lot of traffic coming down my street because it's gonna come off the freeway. This is the street to get there. So, it, so our street becomes a gateway and not the safe haven that it is now. You know, it's a big factor when you move somewhere to raise your family and all of a sudden, it turns to a, you know, a high-traffic area. This is not a high-traffic area. A lot of people been here for years, you know, and you can walk, walk your dogs. You ain't gotta worry about cars flying down the street hitting you for the most part. You know, you put in 40 new residents, it's, it's gonna change. It's gonna change the whole dynamic of the neighborhood.
That's right. And all they care about is that money. We say no, 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 no.
Through the neighborhood, no issues. You know, 40 residents, uh, 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 we don't know what kind of people move in there and if they're new here, they get lost, how they gonna get there? You know, off the freeway, all the traffic is gonna come down Lee Baker. I don't want that. I don't need that. You know, that's, that's not good. That's not a good look. So, you know, a meeting, a meeting with the residents is the right thing to do. You know, residents should have input because we're the ones that had the repercussions behind it, you know? We're not making the money off of it. We're not getting anything off the sales, but we gotta deal with the traffic. We gotta deal with the garbage cans, you know? We're gonna have to deal with trash out there, you know, the noise pollution, you know? All the different aspects that goes into it, us as residents, we have to deal with that. So, we should have some type of say-so, a sit-down and change things. You know, so that would be appreciated. Just wanna make my word heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, yes, hi, my name is Bruce Moore. I live at one eight five eight one Capital Drive. Yep, everybody all... It's been pretty obvious with this call, with most of our residents here about this rezoning request. Um, I think the bigger issue is the way that this has been handled. And it's, it's really unfortunate that it's been handled the way it has. Um, Mrs. Dunn spoke earlier about the people in Arborloft having their voices heard about a dog park. But yet, we can't have our voices heard by the owners of this property about our concerns and our wishes. We, um... We, we, I think, I, 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 um, appreciate the efforts of the architects that spoke earlier about the changes that they did make. So, I appreciate that, that they've taken the time to make some changes, even though they aren't the owners of the property. We've asked to meet with the owners of the property and that's not happened. So, this is the fourth time that I've come before you asking that you deny this zoning request. Um, we'll continue to keep coming forward, asking the same thing. You know, as a resident of this community, I mean, I see on a daily basis that site just before us and that being the Bacon School and the playground that's in need of refinement. We can all agree that something needs to be done. The question, which has become a major problem, is what do you consider improvement and how is it being carried out? It's been stated previously by some people on this call that building condos and duplexes would be an asset to our neighborhood and would increase somehow the value of our homes. I asked the question, how is a duplex or a condo gonna increase the value of single-family homes? Do you plan to sell these condos at $350,000 and above? Probably not. I doubt it. So, how is building 22 units with no land nor yard gonna increase the value of our homes? I made a suggestion previously to convert this area into a nice park. We've had some people that are seniors speak earlier about how quiet it is, how much they love the neighborhood. They would probably love, like, like myself, that would love to get out and walk in a nice park. And I think that a park would be an asset and increase the value of our neighborhood. So, it's similar to what you would see in Birmingham. It's been stated that there's a housing shortage in Southfield. That may be true. But should we, as residents of this neighborhood, be okay with the desire of some to place the quantity of lives over the quality of the lives? I'll apologize, but living in Southfield may not be for everybody. This area is already zoned for single-family houses. Why not put five to six houses of comparable or better yet, higher value?
I agree with that.
Yeah, to appease, to appease and to appeal and potentially increase our selling value if we decide to sell. The simple answer to that question is money. Why try to sell five to six homes when you can make more money by selling 22 duplexes or condos? This is and has always been about the money. The owners of this property, we know who the owners are. They have no concern for the existing residents. I asked a question at this same meeting two years ago. How many homeowners were notified of this potential change in rezoning? I was told that only, the only homes that were within 350 feet radius of the school was notified. I live four houses from that school and yet, my house does not fall within the 350-foot radius. Therefore, if not for the efforts of my neighbors, I would have been SOL. We as residents...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the three minutes is up. It's up to you if you would like the, uh, caller to continue.
No, I think, I think we're good. I think that was a lot of points. So, thank you for your comments. Okay, next caller, please. Uh, are there any new, new comments, uh, people that we have not heard from yet?
Yes. My name is Bure Artist. I'm at one eight six two one Capital Drive. And I'm on board with everybody else with, uh, no, you know, not for this particular community. And one point I could add to what's already been said would be, there's, whenever it rains, there's a lot of water on that street close on the west side of that school. And then, think about how many toilets these $350,000 units will have, two to three bathrooms. What are we gonna do about that situation? Yes, that's right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other new comments?
Yes, my name is Bernard Coleman. I'm at eighteen four three nine George Washington Drive. I just wanna say no because if there's anything over six houses over there, we don't need that here. I didn't move over here to retire. The, you have a bunch of doggone people coming over there that is gonna flood this area with too much traffic. I'm not for it. No.
Thank you.
She gonna be showing people them condos over here.
All right, Terry, Jeff, um, not sure if we have any other new comments. Or do you think it's appropriate to close the public hearing?
I have a comment or, or, or question. My name is, uh, Douglas Moore.
Okay, go ahead, Douglas.
I'm at, uh, two four five three five Lee Baker Drive. Okay, after this public hearing, what is the next step in the next process as far as y'all make, coming up with a deci- decision whether you're gonna rezone this property? Is there any other opportunity for the neighbors to have input? Or is this the, this is it right here, this conversation that we have with you tonight?
Well, through, through the chair, I, I will answer that right now. Um, to the, uh, to the caller, this is a public hearing by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will have a study meeting and then they will hold their own public hearing, um, at the end of May. So, the residents would have another opportunity to voice their concerns next month as well.
Okay, so, that, that's the City Council meeting. So, basically, you're, you're just gonna, you're just going to, uh, give your, uh, opinion on what should be done? And, and what are, what, 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 what we put, what would you put into that decision? I know it's what the, what the, what we have to say. What else are you considering when you give that final decision to the City Council? Uh, uh, have you did a traffic study to see the, the, the impact of the traffic? Have you already done that study? If so, is it available for us to, uh, to see it?
Again, we're gonna, we're gonna address all the, um, all the legitimate questions that have been raised tonight after we close the public hearing.
Okay, what about this question I just asked? Is that not legitimate?
Um, that, that is a legitimate question that will be addressed after all of the public comments. There's, there's been, there's...
When you talk about after all of us have spoken, you will address it tonight?
Correct. There's been questions if this is rental or for sale, how much is it gonna sell for? What kind of garages? How many bathrooms? Will the sewer go into the sewer system or out on the street? Will the rainwater drain? All kinds of questions. Some relevant, some not. Um, many relevant that we're gonna, the developers, the architects, the, the city, uh, staff will address at the end of, um, the public comment section.
And a traffic study is...
I feel like we're almost to the end. I feel like we're almost to the end and all these questions will be addressed soon.
Okay, and, and I would assume a traffic study has been obtained or, or has been. Like, that could be just a yes or no.
That, that, I'm sure that will be a yes or no and it will be explained further soon.
Okay, okay. All right. So, what, what other considerations are y'all factoring in when you make this decision? That, that was another one of my questions. Will that be answered at the end as well? What, I, cause I wanna know to, the totality of the decision-making that goes into whatever recommendations that you give to the City Council. You know what I'm saying? I wanna know if, if it's possible, the factors. And will that be public information that, that we as neighbors can obtain?
Yes, and, and that was, some of that was stated at the beginning of the presentation and it'll be restated again.
I'm sorry, I came in late. I'm sorry. I apologize. I came in late. I didn't come in at the beginning. So, a lot of information and a lot of things that were said at the very beginning of this meeting, I wasn't privy to. So, only, the only thing I'm speaking on now is the knowledge that I, I obtained by being on this meeting for the last 15 or 20 minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Well, stay tuned, uh, through the end. All right, any other, uh, new callers? Uh, Terry, Jeff, any, any idea if we're, if we're through all the, the new comments?
Well, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I mean, you, you asked a question and, and no one said anything. So, I would believe that, uh, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing. Uh, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing.
Did you hear us?
Every time. Um, go, go ahead. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, yes, Andrew Marco, eight nine four Capital Drive. Uh, I'm, I'm, I oppose rezoning. Uh, one of the main reasons is I'm in the mortgage industry and I'm aware of. As far as.
I'm having a real time hearing you. All I heard was mortgage industry and nothing's after that.
Okay, I, I apologize for that. I'm in the mortgage industry, so I'm, I'm aware that when apartments or condominiums actually go into a location. As far as getting comps or what we call comparable, uh, they're always. In, 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 in my history of, of mortgages, have always brought down property values for single. Situation. A refinance or purchase, but it's always been detrimental for a single family home. I just wanted to make, make that.
He said always.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. I will, I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing at this time. We've, we've heard many comments. Uh, so the public hearing is now closed. Uh, staff, how do we wanna attack the?
I, through the chair.
Laundry lister.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to, um, I'm trying to hit the, the common themes here. We'll try to address one by one. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Bella if he wants to respond to any of the other questions that I might have missed. And, uh, one of the ones that keeps coming up is, um, there's been a lot of references to rental. And my understanding. Is, um, this is all condominiums, meaning, uh, ownership. That they're for sale both within the school and for the, uh, single family attached units. So to the, um, architect and his team, if you can confirm, again, we stated that earlier in the beginning of the meeting. That all these units will be for sale only.
Thank you, Terry. Yes, we can confirm. They are all for sale. None are rental units.
Okay, um, the second thing was again, um. A caller wanted to know how they could get additional information. These, uh, all of our projects, um, are available through the city's website, the planning department homepage. There's an interactive map. You can go to the section of the city. Uh, there's a pin with this project identified. You can click on that and you can see the illustrations. But if you want some additional information, you can contact planning department's office during normal business hours, either by phone or email. And it's easy for us to, uh, provide the PowerPoint presentation to you digitally. Uh, there was some, a lot of questions about the value. Uh, of the project and the, the effect on the neighborhood. Uh, based on those same questions that were asked two weeks ago. At the study session, I did reach out to the city assessor and he, uh, provided us with. Some comments that, uh, um, basically saying that, uh, this will increase the value of, of the homes in the neighborhood versus the existing conditions. And that he thought this was a, a positive enhancement, um, to the neighborhood based on its locations, style of units and, and so forth. There's a lot of questions about traffic. Uh, I believe Mr. Bella provided some traffic, um, average daily traffic. Comparing what the school was versus what the proposed traffic is for the, um. Condominium units within the school as well as the attached single family. Mr. Bella, will you please repeat? Repeat those, uh, that information?
I'll be happy to, Terry. Um, charter school traffic and, uh, at or near occupancy, total trips per weekday. Was about eight hundred and fourteen trips. The, uh. The site plan that you see in front of you will generate approximately three hundred and forty trips. So almost five hundred trips less.
And, and this, this is based on, uh, Traffic Institute standard, correct?
Correct, correct.
And, and you had also made a comment, um, about. Where you thought ingress and egress would be generated based on, on the location and access to the major roads. Would you repeat that, please?
I'd be happy to. We believe the typical path of travel will be east on George Washington to Southfield Road and north on Continental to Ten Mile Road.
There, there were several comments regarding trash and dumpsters. Can you address, um, what the proposed refuse, collection, distribution is, is for each of these phases of development?
Yes, uh, first of all, there are no dumpsters, exterior dumpsters on the, on the site. Each residence is responsible for their own trash. Every, every residence has their own garage. Two-car garage and we anticipate that trash will be set out like you would typically do on any street, you know, at your curb side. And the dumpster will, I'm sorry, and the, and the trash collector will then come through and take the recyclables. And any trash that one person has. So there'll be nothing on George Washington or Continental. It'll all be on the interior streets that have been provided to really make it more of a neighborhood setting.
There was a, a number of questions or comments about not having enough parking. Could you address, um, onsite parking lots, um, garages for, for total parking? Based on the number of units and, and the need that's anticipated?
Jeff, can we go back to the slides, please? Or, I mean, I can, I can speak that every, every residence has a, has a two-car garage. And we have provided what is based on code above and beyond what, what has been asked for, um. Yeah, this, this is probably the best one. So we have a total unit count of, of forty. We have off-street parking provided at eighty, so that's basically forty times two. Where, um, actually what is, what is required by code is actually seventy-one. We have provided additional parking, five of which are gonna be barrier free of, of, of thirty-eight spaces. So we have a total of a hundred and eighteen spaces. And we also have included bike parking on this as well because we anticipate that not everyone. Will be using their vehicle on a, on a, on a daily basis. So if, and city allows for, uh. These, these, these four bike parking locations, which have about six spaces each, to equal about twenty-four spaces. And some of that can be offset. And I don't know, Terry, do you wanna discuss that at all? How that can be factored into the equation?
Um, ju- just that, uh, the city does require bike parking to promote more non-motorized transit. So that'll be an additional amenity, um, requirement. Uh, for the site that we do give credit for its off-street parking for every four bike spaces provided. But in this, in this case, you are, um, exceeding the parking ratio that's required by rezoning ordinance. Was, um, there was some concerns about noise and twenty-four seven access. Uh, and again, I, I don't, I don't imagine that the traffic patterns. For these condominium units would be any different than single family. However, uh, wanted to give you the opportunity to address those two concerns.
Thank you. Once and again, I mean, first of all, these are single family residences. Uh, yes, some of them are, are, are attached to single family residents and some are in the adaptively reused McKinley Building. That being said, uh, you know, the, the, the target market here, again, these are for sale, not for rent. And with an anticipated cost of somewhere between three hundred and three hundred and thirty thousand dollars per unit. And some of these are actually rather large units. Um, we don't, I don't know how you quantify this, but we don't, some, somebody had made a, a comment that. You know, it's not gonna bring in the right kind of people. And I'm, I'm not gonna comment on that specifically, but I will tell you that the people that are targeted for this, some are potentially empty, empty nesters. And we've already had interest from some, some people actually in the, in the Washington Heights neighborhood. Who would like to come live here, they don't take care of their lawn anymore, you know, older, older residents, potentially single family. Could be, could be millennials, uh, without, without family members. Again, um, to, to, to discuss traffic, if you, if you look at the site plan, then you can see that the, the residential portion, it's set up with streets. It's set up with, 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 with areas and, and, and sidewalks. It's, it's, it's meant to be pedestrian friendly. It's meant to be connected not only to the Washington Heights neighborhood. But to the amenities that are, that are, that are adjacent to it. So, you know, with a bit of forward thinking, we're looking at taking this, and they, and they, and they also face each other. The, uh, the single family residents face each other the way that a normal, quote unquote, normal street is. This was set up to represent a street scape, so it's really an, an, an addition or, uh, exclamation point to the, to the, to the city. To the way that Washington Heights neighborhood has been, has been planned. Now, there is a, there is the school building and, and I would like to say that, you know, some, some people mentioned that they were here twenty years, thirty years. Even some even, even longer. Well, they were here when the, when the school was active. So they had purchased their, their residence during that time and, and probably no one complained about traffic then. Um, and, you know, now it's gonna be much, much less traffic. I mean, these are, these are residences. These are gonna be your neighbors. And I don't expect any more traffic coming from this neighborhood than I would from people who live on George Washington or Continental Avenue.
And I will, um, I'll address the, um, criteria that we will be reviewing and steps, but was, was there anything else, John, that you took notes on that I've missed? I tried to highlight the main, the main points that people.
Yeah, I mean, it took, it took quite extensive notes. I, I mean, I mean, people, people made comments about undesirable residents. Again, I can't speak to the people who would potentially buy this, but I can tell you that these are, these are not rental units. These are for sale. And at the price point that they are selling, I would anticipate that these are professional people coming into this neighborhood. Um. I just, I'm, I'm just going down the list. Um, and, you know, people, people made comments about not, not meeting with the, with the mayor or, 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 or with the group. We actually, cause I, I was part of these meetings, I met with groups at this site. Three, on, on, on three separate occasions, people, people were invited to come to the site and give their opinion. Hence, the way that, the way that this site plan has kind of morphed from the, from the original plan. As a matter of fact, the last meeting was held on February fourth, twenty teni, twenty twenty, right before we were kind of went into, went into lockdown mode. So I know that, uh, the group has, has, has reached out to the community on multiple occasions. And I've spoken to people face to face on multiple occasions. The, the changes that, that were made to the site plan were not just from planning meetings. I mean, they, they were from sitting down face to face with people. And I, I've actually gone to the site and met with one person who wanted to talk. It was just he and I. And we sat there and we, we had opened up what, what was the old kindergarten space. We had renderings and drawings up. We took people around to show them how, how this was going to be changed. So, um, people talked about, you know, the blight of the, of the existing playground and those kind of temporary units, that's all going to be gone. Uh, this is all gonna be newly renovated and, and as you heard, the, uh, the, the city assessor said that the property values were going to be raised because of this development. Um. I'm just going through my notes, Terry, just bear with me.
Yeah, there, there was, there was a comment about utilities and drainage, so you wanna address those as well?
Sure, I, 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 I mean, we do have site drainage on the, on the, on the site. We have a, we have detention area on the site. We have storm detention. On, on the site, uh, nothing's gonna be running out in, into the street. We're not allowed to do that and we wouldn't do that anyway. Uh, those of you who live in this neighborhood know that the east side of the site, it pools with water. I mean, I've been out there after a rainstorm in, in, I think it was July or, or August. By the, by the temporary units, by those trailer units, and it was like two feet of water that I had to slog through. Um, that is all gonna be mitigated, uh, and phase, phase one and then, and then phase two. Within, within phase one, you're going to see the storm detention system put in, all of the infrastructure is gonna be put in for, for, for phase two. And we're hopeful that phase one and we'll go right into phase two. If we're, if we are, if we're allowed to, uh, to do so. Did I answer the question sufficiently? I still have a civil engineer here, but I haven't answered the question sufficiently.
So why don't, uh, since she's been patient here, why don't you let her respond?
She's.
Drainage and utility issues that were raised.
Tricia?
Sure, yeah, so I think, uh, John did a great job giving an overview. We know that there are existing issues with drainage on the site as it is today on the east side. And, um, this development will be providing stormwater management in accordance with, um, you know, all of the applicable ordinances. So, um, we'll expect that most of the stormwater or a good majority of the stormwater, depending on the storm event, will actually be managed on the site itself. And slowly released into the system, um, rather than, uh, the current condition where it's either pooling on the site. Or, um, just discharging directly into the system. So, um, really looking at a reduction in strain from stormwater, uh, from this project.
So, wouldn't, wouldn't it be fair to say that when this was probably built? So many decades ago, there was really no stormwater standards or stormwater features built in. But now that there's new development coming, you have to, you have to, um, respond to current county and city standards. And, and, uh, we'll actually correct a lot of the, uh, existing situation.
Yeah, that's a great way to put it. Um, currently, the site is just directly discharging, which means as soon as the rain falls. It's going straight into the sewer and, um, the, the way that we do stormwater management now really delays. The rate that that gets into the sewer to reduce the strain on the sewer system.
Do you have anything else, John, before we talk about process and then we're gonna go back to the planning commission and they, they'll have questions, each of them?
I guess well, I wanna state for everyone to hear just a couple of points that, uh, mailings were sent out to, to residences. We did engage with the, with the residents, uh, you know, mailings were sent out to all the residents last summer. And again, the latest meeting was on February fourth of, uh, of twenty twenty. And again, these are not rental units. These are market value residences. Thank you, Terry, for your time.
Okay, and, uh, I'll just again comment that, um. This public hearing, I, I took down over thirty, um, public comments. This is part of our process. Planning commissioners are all residents of the community. So they've, um, they've heard all of your concerns. And there will be another opportunity at city council for a public hearing. You can contact our office in the meantime. You can submit emails or, or letters, um, pro or con. That will be, uh, forwarded to the city council. Um, Mr. Spence, can you go to the slide about, um, the criteria for, for the R U D D? So I just wanna make, uh, a general statement that based on the last master plan, we, there was identified. Almost a dozen school sites throughout the city that were underutilized, vacant or undeveloped. And, um, the school district, the superintendent actually, um, reached out to us during that whole master plan process. And said to the city and the planning department, what can we do? Um, to revitalize these, these sites? And it was with that in mind that the concept of residential unit development district was to take. And it was with that in mind that the concept of residential unit development district was to take undeveloped, underdeveloped, and vacant school property, both the buildings themselves, if they're salvageable, and the vacant space, and try to revitalize, um, have adaptive reuse, and to be sustainable, that we weren't tearing the buildings down and putting all that in the landfill, and to breathe new life, to support and enhance property values, not to degrade, um, based on their decay. And, uh, this proposal is the first to, uh, take advantage of those regulations that we adopted. And the criteria, uh, is to be consistent with the adaptive reuse and sustainability of these large vacant sites for residential, um, multifamily and mixed use development. They have to be compatible with adjacent uses, so all the things that Mr. Spence had read, the architectural integrity, height setbacks, density, landscaping, green infrastructure. They have to have access to major thoroughfares, uh, estimated traffic to be generated by the proposed development has to be reasonable, proximity, proximity in relation to intersections, uh, because some, some school sites do not have good access like this particular site does. They might have one driveway in and out and be a long, narrow, a lot that doesn't have any other ingress or egress. And, uh, location access of off-street parking, which has been addressed, traffic circulation, um, supportive pedestrian circulation, non-motorized by walking, biking, or access to public transit, and protection of natural environment. In this case, there's no large woodlands or wetlands, but as the civil engineer indicated, there are issues with flooding, and it's that, uh, first inch of rain that causes the most pollutants from the roads and the parking lots, the gasoline, the oils and the dirt, to go directly into our storm sewer, which then ends up in our drinking water. So the, the new design will release this, um, storm event at an agricultural rate and clean that water before it goes into our system. It has to be compatible with future land use plan, and it has to be in compliance with all of our regulations. So those are the standards that the planning commission needs to hold this project against before they make a recommendation. And as I stated earlier, their job is to make sure that the process has been, um, completed fairly and within the guidelines, that the project meets the intent and the regulations, uh, for this particular project, and to take into account public comment. And then they make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council goes through the same process, and ultimately, they can decide whether to approve, deny, or to, um, modify. So with that outline, Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it back to you so that the planning commissioners each have opportunity to ask questions and make comments before you guys deliberate on a final recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
To the chair?
Commission, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you were going to end the public comment period first?
Uh, we did, we did, 10 or 15 minutes ago.
Okay, I have a couple of comments that I would like to make. One of the questions that people kept mentioning was property taxes. The Headley tax amendment only allows a small percent, one point something percentage of the property increase each year. So them building new houses is not going to raise your property taxes until you sell your current home, and the new person will have higher taxes to pay. The, uh, other thing is that when you sell a home, you have, when, when a neighbor sells a home, they have no control, you have no control over who purchases the house, and someone paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more for a house, I think would tend to take care of it and not let it fall down around them. So not knowing who purchases one of these condos is not a problem that really should exist, because people will take care of their property unless it's already depleted or dilapidated. And I don't think these new buildings will be dilapidated. The other thing is that if you don't do something with the school now, if they don't do anything with the school now, who is going to buy the property? No one has asked for it before, so what makes you think someone's just going to jump out the closet and buy it tomorrow? You have to think about what a bird in the hand versus one in the bush. You have to go with what you got and what's available. And yes, there are some issues or questions that need to be raised, but you can't control everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Geraldine Stevens-Gunn to the chair.
Yes. Go ahead, Geraldine.
I, um, live in this community and have been a resident here for the past 24 years. I concur with the previous commissioner, uh, I've watched that property disintegrate rapidly over the years, and unless, uh, uh, someone comes in with a great plan to develop it, uh, I'm uncertain how long it's going to be before those portables are demolished, and I'm, I'm just a little concerned about, um, the continued disintegration of that property, especially with the drainage issues. I do have a question for the, uh, the architect. I would like to know, has a developer been secured, and what is the timeline for, um, implementation should the project be approved?
Through the chair, may I speak?
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you. Dr. Stevens, uh, we, 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 we have been discussing the project with a, with a, with a developer. Con- contracts are underway, if you will. If we can get approval from planning commission and, and then go to, uh, city council, we will then begin submitting our drawings for site plan approval, and, and once we get site plan approval, we will go in for a building permit. So it's all sequential, obviously, one thing is predicated on the other, but, but the plan is to move forward.
I would also like to, uh, include for the record that I believe that the, uh, proposal is in compliance with the requirements for the residential, uh, unit development district concept.
Thank you.
To the chair, this is Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes.
Uh, I just want to say, uh, this is rezoning, and we met two years ago and talked about this, we know that something has to be done to that area, and looking at what we have now, um, being a commissioner, my charge is to make sure that whoever's coming in to do whatever they need to do meet all the requirements. If that petitioner meets all the requirements, checks all the boxes, then I got, can't use my personal belief what I think or don't think. So, the reason I'm in favor of this rezoning is RUD, they meet the requirement, all five of them. The traffic study is in favor, it will not impede or add to traffic. A matter of fact, it may even decease based on what the traffic study says. The assessor says that the property value will not go down. Uh, different people have come in and gave their opinion of whether it go up or not, but my vote is based on the petitioner meeting the threshold and fulfilling his obligation to this council. So that's why I think this area needs to be rezoned, because the petitioner has matched the threshold and made all the boxes checked right. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
To the chairs, Commissioner Martin again?
Yes.
We, as the, uh, planning commission, got some additional information, and I know, uh, Terry was talking about putting the information or having a digital information available for residents that write and request it. I'd like to include, like, the traffic study, uh, the, the assessor statements and that included in the information we give them, so people have as much information as possible on this development, and knows that we are giving them all the information that we have to consider.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just confirm that, uh, that information that was, was presented today to us will be part of the packet that the public can review as this thing moves forward.
Any other comments from the commission?
Uh, I'll, I'll say a few things just thinking about this. Um, really like this development, I really like redevelopments like this where we can repurpose a historic building and, and, and infill a neighborhood. Um, just remember, this is 200 feet off of 10 Mile Road and a few hundred feet off of Southfield Road. I can listen out my window right now on 10 Mile Road, it's, it's loud, there's traffic, it's, it's a nice neighborhood, it's a quiet neighborhood as you get further in, but this is the edge, this is the transition. This is the way cities work, there's busy districts and they transition down to quiet residential districts, and that's why a project like this is, is nice, it's a transitional project, it actually is going to, I think, calm the neighborhood and some of these houses right here, um, from some of the retail uses that are adjacent to them. This is a pretty small housing development at the end of the world, it's, it's 40 houses, it's maybe, you know, 100 people. It, it's pretty small, it's pretty big and important, I think, for the neighborhood and the city, but it's, this isn't, uh, you're not building Comerica Park, you know, right, right here and bringing, uh, 60,000 people in, 45,000 people. Um, so I think this is a really, it's a really nice project, it's, it's really well done, it meets all the zoning criteria. Um, just based on my years of experience in, in architecture and building and construction and real estate, this is, it feels good all the way around, so I can't separate instinct and experience from everything else, but I, I know it meets the zoning ordinance. I know, I can see it out of my office window behind me here, pretty much across the building, and, um, I think it's good for everybody. And I think it's, um, when it's built, and when the neighbors, the neighborhood infills, and sounds like this neighborhood's going to transition if truly everybody's in there, they've been there for 40 years, and, you know, that's the way cities and neighborhoods flow, and that's not a bad thing. Um, and you can't control all those things around you, so, um, I really like this project, and I'm vo- I'm voting in favor because it meets all the zoning ordinance criteria.
Uh, any other comments from the commission? All right, uh, we'd be looking for the recommendation from the planning department?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the planning department does recommend favorable consideration of P Z R R U D D 19 dash 0001 to rezone 4.128 acres of land to residential unit development district, R U D D, for 18 units in the former school as phase one, and up to an additional 22 units, 11 attached two-family units, in new construction for a future phase two for the following reasons and with the following condition. Southfield comprehensive master plan indicates moderate single-family for this property. The change to R U D D would be compatible with and similar to the existing adjacent zonings and land uses to the north and west. Properties in accordance with the standards for rezoning of property in the R U D D regulations. It's subject to the McKinley Sub-School R U D D Development Agreement. Each phase of development shall be commenced within 18 months of the schedule set forth on the approved plan for the R U D D. If construction is not commenced within the time period, approval of the plan shall become null and void. Review and approval of final detailed phase two development shall be required by the planning commission and city council. Unless waived or modified by the development agreement, the yard and bulk, parking, loading, landscaping, lighting, and other standards shall comply with those found in the single-family residential district standards R4. It shall maintain 25% of open space, and it must be located on a public thoroughfare with direct access to that thoroughfare. That conclude, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. So entertain a motion?
This is Geraldine Stevens-Gunn.
Yes.
Right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I motion that the, uh, proposal P Z R R U D D 19 dash 001, the rezoning request to create a residential development district be approved.
Commissioner Culpepper, support?
Okay, we've got a favorable recommendation by Commissioner Stevens-Gunn, supported by Commissioner Culpepper. We have a roll call vote, please?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, Mr. Martin?
I, favorable?
Dr. Stevens-Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Support?
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes?
Mr. Huntington? Mr. Huntington, you need to unmute your phone, please? And I'm not hearing Mr. Huntington, unfortunately, um, Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make, uh, one more call to Mr. Huntington. Mr. Huntington?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, now I can.
Okay, I've been trying to talk for the last 30 minutes, I don't know what happened. Okay, uh, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Excuse me, uh, Mr. Chairman, you do have a favorable recommendation for P Z R R U D D 19 dash 0001.
Okay, thank you. Right, next, uh, we have the tax amendment, P Z P A 21 dash 0003.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so this is the, uh, site planner view request of Nick Frund, uh, Frunden Associates on behalf of the owner Trucklight. Uh, this property located at 20600 Civic Center Drive, um, northwestern corner, uh, northeast corner of Civic Center and Northwestern Highway. Um, this site planner view request is for the approval of an increase in square footage of the existing building, totaling 49,017 gross square feet, plus required land bank parking spaces. This is a little bit closer view, uh, of the property. Uh, it actually is much further developed than what the, what the image currently shows, this was taken in 2020. Uh, but that is the existing building, uh, on the corner of Northwestern Highway and Civic Center Drive. Property is owned RC, Regional Center, and this is the proposal for the site plan. Really, the only change to the plan is, uh, along the north property line, and you can see the dash lines for 38, uh, land banked parking spaces uh, for this particular facility. The whole reason why these are required, uh, is because when the building was constructed, um, the, the square footage was actually, uh, less than what it is now. Uh, the, uh, developer or the owner ended up adding additional square footage on the inside of the building, not on the outside, but on the inside, and what that triggered was additional parking requirements for this particular facility. Uh, so while they met the parking requirements before, when this originally went through the process, uh, by adding the additional square footage, um, it triggered new parking spaces required. So that's why it's coming back before the planning commission, uh, again, is for the increase in the square footage of the building, but also for the land bank parking spaces. Uh, now the parking spaces are not needed right now, um, that's the reason behind the word land banked. Um, so, uh, they'll remain as landscape area until such time as uh, the owner needs the additional parking spaces, uh, on site for his use. This is what was previously previously approved for the project. You can see the square footage of about plus minus 40,000 square feet. This was the interior of of the site when it was previously approved, that's the floor plan. And this is a constructed floor plan as it stands today with a first and a second floor. Rendering of the building. And with that, I, we do have the petitioner online. So Nick, if you would like to add some additional comments, now is the time to do that.
Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate it. And thanks, folks, for listening. I think Jeff did a nice job. We we, in terms of the drip line of the building, I think we added 300 square feet. I don't want to say it's been a difficult process, it's just been a technicality, right? We feel, justice with Terry and Jeff, there was a technicality between the architect, the civil engineer, and Southfield. You know, we we'd land bank before. The increase triggered more land banking. So we're trying to make that good to meet the the ordinance. So I hope, I hope there's not much more to say.
And this is Planner Crota. I'll just echo that our goal is to have less impervious surface than more. So we're fully supportive of the land bank parking. And in effect, from the outside, you you would hardly notice the difference because the additional square footage was made up on the interior of of the drip line, as Nick has referred to, on the second floor. But again, I, this is outside of the purview of administrative review, and we want to be completely transparent where the changes were. And this is just basically correcting the as-built so that we have a paper trail on how we got to this point. And this is not a public hearing, so if there's any questions that the commission may have, we'll try to answer that at this point. But it's pretty straightforward and we're recommending.
Commissioners, any other comments, questions?
To the Chair, Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes.
Yeah, I, like Terry said, I think it's a pretty straightforward. It's good that you brought this forward, so you got a paper trail of what you did. And again, having land bank is not a bad idea. Matter of fact, we favor that. So I'm 100%, 100% proud of this and good job. Thank you very much for bringing this forward and doing what needed to be done. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks.
This is Geraldine Stevens-Gunn.
Yes.
I concur with Mr. Culpepper. I think that just to make sure that everything is cut and dry and clean and cleanliness is perfect. I wish more, more in our life was like that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments?
Hey, Geraldine, I haven't forgotten about your idea to get a tour of the building. We'll see if we can make that happen, ma'am.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a great idea. I just wanted to say this is a really nice looking building and the landscaping and everything looks really great. It was good to see this, this project move forward through the the shutdowns and everything and to see actual construction activity during the last year. It was, it was good to see it, and it turned out really nice. And I'm in favor of cleaning this up. So with that, is there a recommendation from staff?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Yep.
Hello? I'm sorry, was there a comment? Okay, planners' recommendations. The planning department does recommend favorable recommendation of the site planner view request of Frunden Associates on behalf of the owner, Trucklight LLC, for 38 land bank parking spaces for an additional 9,017 gross square feet of usable floor area within the existing Clarion's Trucklight Building, property located 20600 Civic Center Drive, Sidwell Parcel 2422201-2026, on the northeast corner of Civic Center Drive and Northwestern Highway, City of Southfield, with the following conditions. 38 land bank parking spaces shall be constructed on an as-needed basis. Landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the attached tree preservation plan and landscape plan sheets L1, L2, L3 dated 3/21/19. Petitors provide a sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant material. Exterior lighting for the land bank spaces shall be constructed when parking spaces are constructed and will be shielded to prevent spillage of land with adjacent properties. And that concludes this recommendation for this particular project.
Thanks, Jeff. Entertain a motion. Yes.
The Chair, Commissioner Martin, I recommend approval of PSP21-0005.
Support, this is Commissioner Culpepper.
Right, we got a favorable recommendation by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Culpepper. Have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Willis.
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper.
Yes.
Mr. Huntington.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Stevens-Gunn.
Yes.
Mr. Griffith.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you do have a favorable recommendation for PSP21-0005.
All right, thank you.
And if I may, through the Chair, we did have one more public hearing, the, for the If I could go to that one, sir, it was the, actually, at the very end of the PowerPoint, and that's why I I kind of skipped it. But with your permission, if I could do the text amendment?
Yes, let's go.
Great. All right, I, just let me flip through these particular slides right now, let me get to that.
I want to, I want to say this, Commissioner Huntington, I'm having some serious technical problems over here. No one can hear me most of the time, just so you know.
All right, sir.
Commissioner Huntington, I, I know the feeling. I've had that on a couple of meetings.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, going in and out.
All right, so with regard to this particular item, this is a text amendment that modifies the definition of nonconformities within the city. Yes?
Um, Nick, you're all set, so you're welcome to stay on, but you got approved, and you can follow up with our office. But I didn't want you to have to sit through this. They made the the formal recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Terry. We got some hydro seat in for you, too, so I appreciate everything.
Okay, sorry, Jeff. He looked like he was waiting for something.
That's his check-in. Okay.
Okay. So again, PZTA21-0003, this text amendment addresses modifying the definition of nonconforming use in Article 2 of the zoning ordinance. Also amending, hold on for a second, I need to mute someone. Also amending Article 4, Section 5.23 to clarify nonconforming uses. Amending Article 4, Section 5.22-4, signs and lighting by adding commercial slash residential to the section title, adding new Section 5.2-4-1 exterior lighting and glare to provide standards for lighting and protection for adjacent properties from glare, and revising Article 4, Section 5.31, Paragraph 15, to provide for sufficiently lighted areas for security and safety and other amendments that may become necessary as needed for the City of Southfield. This particular slide shows the specifics to the particular articles and the changes. Again, adding a definition for nonconforming site as shown in the definition here on the slide. Under Article 4, Section 5.18, again, we we add a definition of a nonconforming, what a nonconforming site is. Section, Article 4, Section 5.31, this has to do, again, with off-street parking space layout standards, construction with regard to exterior lighting and illumination. And then finally, Article 4, Section 5.22-4, again, to to change the the title of that section to signs and commercial residential lighting. And then finally, a brand-new section being added to Article 4, having to do with exterior lighting and glare. Really, this has come up as a result of some complaints that we've received, not only from buildings, but now, now more recently, from residential uses, of people putting in LED-type lights in their rear yards or front yards. There's really become a problem with regard to lighting and glare for for other residences within the area. So this is a response to some changes that that some people have made to the lighting on the exteriors of their houses that has actually led to to a nuisance. And that's the reason why this is coming to be. And with that, that's it for staff comments at the moment.
Okay, this is a public hearing, open up to the public at this time. And Jeff, could you put that call-in number up again?
Yep, just give me a second here, sir. I just need to do some unmuting. All right, I apologize for that, sir, when you're unmuting everyone.
Hello?
Yes, do you have a comment about the text amendment?
I don't, I just have one question. I would just like to know.
If I may, ma'am, this is the time for the text amendment only in a public hearing. If you, if you have some additional comments, we will have a public comment section at the end of all the other items.
We have more items to cover?
The planning, the planning commission has a few more items to cover, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So again, does anyone have any comments with regard to the text amendment?
You're putting up the phone number.
Yeah, the phone number, I don't have it on this particular slide. I need to go back to a previous slide in order to do that. So actually, the the number is is here at the bottom of this particular page. So if you do have a public comment, you can call 1-415-655-0001, and then the event number is 129-907-2455. And, Mr. Chairman, we'll wait for a couple moments to see if anyone has a comment.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
And, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't appear that we have anyone who has a comment on the proposed text amendment.
Okay, the public hearing is closed for PZTA21-0003.
I, through the Chair, I I just want to make a correction.
Okay.
On the lighting and glare, we have added residential and nonresidential districts. We want to make sure that that's clear. I believe the text that is shown here does not include those citations, but this was originally designed for nonresidential, but we're adding residential to all the appropriate districts so that we've had a number of complaints where people are putting commercial-grade lighting and floodlights on their residential homes and it's causing glare on other residential homes. So I just take that into consideration when you're making your recommendation. That's all I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any questions or comments from the commission?
This is Commissioner Rob Brothers. Just to let you know, I really support the change of the language. Purpose of any order, it's a person, what they can and cannot do. And and I think the language, and I'm not sure if I'm getting it straight, essentially said, if you had liked it, probably the next person, then we prohibit it. Well, that lacks definition, so I think this could be clear definition, and I absolutely support the language change.
All right, if there's no other comments from the commission, be ready to entertain a motion.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, just for for the sake of the public and for the record, the planning department is recommending a favorable recommendation of the, of the draft dated 4/28/21 for the items that were were just discussed.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. We have a motion, please?
The Chair, Commissioner Huntington?
Yes.
I'd like to make a favorable recommendation for PZTA21-0003.
Support, this is Commissioner Culpepper?
All right, we got a favorable recommendation by Commissioner Huntington, supported by Commissioner Culpepper. They have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Dr. Stevens-Gunn.
Yes.
Mr. Willis.
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper.
Yes.
Mr. Huntington.
Support.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
And Mr. Griffith.
Yes.
Okay, you have favorable consideration for PZTA21-0003.
Next, we have PSP21-0006.
Yeah, thank you. Just give me a moment to get to it. Okay, this particular item is on the corner of 9 Mile Road and Southfield Freeway, Northwestern Highway area. It is a site planner view request to construct a multipurpose athletic dome on that particular property to the east of the existing building. This is a closer view of the property itself. And again, this large green area at the southeast corner of the of the site is is where the proposed dome is is is, again, being proposed this evening. Just give me a couple of seconds here, I need to mute some. Property is owned RC Regional Center. And this is the proposed site plan for the site. You can see the location of the dome itself, which is the square area right here. Includes the pedestrian connection to the building as well as from the parking spaces. The entrance to the building itself would be over here off of the northwest corner of the building. And parking spaces for this particular use would generally be in the area directly to the north. With that, the petitioner is on the line. And Amar, I'm not sure if you, do you want to run through your presentation again? It might be helpful for any public that's on.
Sure, we can run through it. The, so, just to give some backstory, I'm just the building owner. I'm not the operator for the dome. I've been through the presentation several times now, so I can probably speak on it. So I'm happy to run through it for anyone that hasn't seen it yet. But I'm not the operator of it myself. So just, if there's anything I misstate, I'm sure Neil, who is the operator for the dome that you guys know, will be able to field any questions. So I'll just take note of them and make sure I get back to you on any questions that I can answer.
So again, would you like me to run through the slide?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it, yeah, let's do it.
Okay, go ahead.
So basically, the dome is supposed to serve as, I believe, two baseball fields and soccer fields. Or it's either supposed to be one or two of each, and then there's going to be a couple batting cages that stack on top of each other. It's going on the roughly three-acre parcel adjacent to the old IBM building. And we've submitted drawings on them now, and we hope to have this project up by September. We've talked to adjacent residents, we've been on a couple city calls now with other members of the community, and we've gotten a pretty positive response so far. And any concerns that have risen, we've been able to address them so far. We can go to the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. That's just the site location that we're referring to, right there. That's the site closest to Nine Mile. Just something that I guess mentioned on this slide, as you can see all the roadways, the adjacent residents had mentioned they don't want a bunch of traffic going up that lane to the townhomes. We had already discussed that we would close off those entrances to the building from that roadway, so we can redirect traffic from the main roadway adjacent to the IBM building from the Nine Mile entrance. Next slide, please. Same thing, outlining kind of like the landscape and like the walkways to the dome. So right there, you'll see that there is a walkway leading up from the Nine Mile side of the building. We actually, in talks with some city members, that walkway will actually be coming from the closest side to the parking lot, up to the dome still. But that walkway from Nine Mile won't be there because it'll cause a disruption to traffic. Next slide, please. That's kind of the batting cages I was referring to. Five stacked, five stacked going that way, and then a baseball field, a soccer field. And I'm not sure what the operators' plans are as far as like availability to colleges, but they had listed a bunch of colleges that were very interested in this dome, and like, they had mentioned they would make it available to local city residents as well as local sports teams. So that's just kind of the background on that. Next slide, please. That's kind of, that's actually the exact dome that we'll be going up. It looks just like that. It peaks out at about 50 feet to its maximum height. And it looks pretty sleek, so it's not, just to put it in reference to the building, it's about, at its peak, it's about a third, a little less than a third of the size of the height of the IBM building. But obviously, it tapers off to both ends. Next slide, please. Just more slides regarding emergency exit and exits so far, as far as the main entrance, which is off to the side. And a couple concerns were mentioned regarding the device that'll provide air to the dome. It's adjacent to it, so it won't, it's in the best possible place for it to avoid being any sort of eyesore. Next slide, please. So this is kind of what I was talking about from the operations standpoint. I can't speak for them on this one, but, you know, they have a number of things that they would like to do with the facility. Mainly, it came along because of baseball, but they said baseball wouldn't be the primary driver for business at this location. It would mostly be soccer. But nonetheless, they're offering weight training, individual training, and plenty of other sorts of training that will be conducive to college sports and other local team sports as well. Next slide, please. Those were, this is a snapshot of the local colleges, schools that were interested in using this dome. And this is just, you know, a primary list that we had come up with in early talks. But ever since we've been on these calls, and we've gotten a ton of interest from other local communities, so that's just giving a snapshot of kind of the main drivers for who would be using this dome. And obviously, we'd have, after this gets up and running, there'd be a couple open sessions for local communities and youth, et cetera. Next slide, please. All right, this was kind of our timeline that we were working with. Obviously, it's been a little up in the air, but we had hoped to get this thing up by September. We, obviously, that's going to be up to you guys if we can make that happen. We're ready to go locked and loaded on our end. We're happy to do anything we need to get this project to completion. So that's just kind of the timeline we've been following. Next slide, please. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I do know that the Director of the Southfield Downtown Development Authority, Al Sevis, is also on the line. Al, is there something you would like to note with regard to this item?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. I'll make my comments quick, given the length of time this evening. With the continued support of the DDA Board, I failed to mention at the last meeting that the project was also presented to the City's Economic Development Committee, where there were three elected officials on the panel, and they were very excited about it. And we're looking forward to receiving it for final approval. That concludes my comments this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just do have one comment to make before you get into the comments from the Commission. Amar, at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, we did ask for a couple of things, one of those being a plan for drop-off and pickup at that north entrance. Can you tell us the status of that?
I'm not sure if that was submitted with the latest set of drawings. If not, we can amend it, and have that to you ASAP. But we, like I said, I know that was a concern on having that from a main driveway. So we've already been able to basically come up with a plan to move the walkway. The entrance is going to be where it is, it just has to be, but the walk, because that's how the dome is, which is actually on that left side, not where your cursor just was. But we won't be building that walkway that you see there. It's not existing today, we won't be building that. The walkway will be coming from the parking lot to the north of that dome.
Okay, so if I may, just through the Chair to the Commissioners, again, this is an item that was asked for, and again, we have not seen it yet.
Got it. Tim, I remember, I know I dropped off the drawings, but I'm not the one that reviewed the drawings, so I'll have to go back and look at those.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
If it's not there, though, I'll make sure it gets to you guys as soon as possible. Just re-outlining that walkway, showing that it's going from the parking lot to that entrance instead of from the Nine Mile entrance.
And Mr. Chairman, staff has no other comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, any questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Rob Willis.
Yes.
I believe I asked last time we met if the entire facility would be handicap accessible, and I think the response was that the floor was flat. And so it generates a couple of questions. So one is, will there be access from parking lot to the facility itself for wheelchair, barrier-free?
Amar, can you answer that question?
Yes, please, I didn't catch that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Will there be access from the parking lot to the building itself, barrier-free, and a ramp or something ensure that a person in a wheelchair has access?
Yeah, so the entrance is not raised in any way, so there will be a walkway directly from the parking lot leading up to that entrance on the west side. So it'll be, a ramp isn't necessary because it's not raised in any way, the ground up to it, leading up to it will be flat.
Okay, and with regard to access, once a person is in, will there be handicap accessible? I'm thinking weights, other kinds of things that you can modify to make it available to an individual?
Yes, that was brought up in discussions last time. That's something I have to talk with the operators. As far as like, as long, as far as we're talking about like walkways and bathrooms, all of that, of course, will be ADA accessible. As far as how that comes into operations with leagues and sports teams, et cetera, I'm not entirely certain on that. But I can speak to the fact that the entire facility will be ADA accessible where feasible.
Okay, and another place I thought is even the emergency exit areas, sometimes you've forgotten there, that also would have to be handicap accessible?
Correct.
Okay. Can't think of anything else. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The Chair, Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
I assume that the building will have a lot of youth during the wintertime. I assume that it will be heated. Will it be used in the summertime and air-conditioned?
It will be used in the summertime and wintertime. It's a year-round project. I, from what I understand, there is fresh air that is circulated in. I have to imagine there will be heat. I think it'll be concentric heat units that are, because there's actually metal infrastructure inside the dome. So what I imagine is there's going to be metal, concentric heat units hanging from those bars. As far as air conditioning, I'm not sure how the operators have planned for that one. But I'm sure it's been considered, granted that they've done extensive research into this over the last year, and this has kind of been a project that's been in their mind for a long time, just not something they've been able to execute until we've kind of partnered up on making this happen.
And I've seen other domes where their signage is printed directly on the dome. Will this have a printed signage on it?
As of now, no. We have considered the logo that you saw at the end of the presentation, possibly. But as of now, no. And of course, we're gonna defer to the community members before we do anything like that, as that plays into, you know, that plays into how you, what the residents of the area would want to see there as well, so.
That brings to mind the question for Commissioner Terry. Is there, with it being a dome like that, is there this ordnance to cover signage on it?
Yeah, again, that'll be handled through the Building Department. So there'll be so much area of wall signage, so to speak, per frontage on Nine Mile, and then there'll be so much ground signage for the entire site, and that's all handled through the Building Department.
Thank you.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Huntington?
Yes.
Okay, how much supervision will be at this location? Do you have a lot of employees just kind of overseeing things, or is it pretty much up to the teams to handle things? And one more question is medical, is there any type of medical facility or nurse on staff, or is that up to the individual teams? I'll listen.
Most of the teams generally will have their own nurse and stuff like that, or, you know, I don't know exactly what you call them, but usually those medical personnel on-site available. It's not something that's going to be like a staff of the dome. The dome will have some staff. It's not going to be, it's more so scheduled appearances, it's not like a walk-in recreational facility. So the level of staff required is less than what you would have in a typical recreational facility.
Okay, so each session is by appointment, basically?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. There are no other comments from the Commission? We have a recommendation from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Planning Department does recommend favorable recommendation of the site planner view request of Epicenter LLC to construct 100,000-square-foot, multiple-purpose athletic facility dome, east of the existing building, property located 18,000 West Nine Mile Road, on the northeast corner of West Nine Mile Road and Northwestern Highway, Central Parcel 2425352-006. Section 25 of the city with the following condition. Landscaping must be installed in accordance with the approved landscape plan prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, unless the season of the year does not permit installation. In that instance, a bond shall be submitted to the Building Department to cover the cost of the installation, and a temporary certificate of occupancy shall be given. Upon completion of landscaping and approval of the same by the Planning Department, the bond will be returned, and a final certificate of occupancy shall be given. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage of glare onto adjacent properties. Photometric lighting plan shall be submitted for review by the Planning Department prior to this issue, item going to the City Council. Petitioners provide sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant material. Petitioners to execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas, both on-site and in the right-of-way, which includes maintenance of the stormwater detention system. Petitioners implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Approval of this site plan and/or building elevations represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval and sign permits must be obtained from the Building Department for any proposed sign. Bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article Four, Section 5.2, paragraph 12. Buildings shall be constructed in accordance with the submitted elevations shown on Sheet A2.1. Hours of operation shall be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to add an additional condition to the submittal of the drop-off and pickup plan for the property. And that concludes this presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
I'll entertain a motion?
Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes.
I recommend favorable approval for PSP 21-0006 with the conditions listed below, with the addition of the drop-off area.
This is Commissioner Willis, support.
Okay, a favorable motion by Commissioner Culpepper with the additional condition, and then supported by Commissioner Willis. I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
And Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you have a favorable recommendation for PSP 21-0006.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the minutes, March 3rd and 24th. Yes?
Mr. Culpepper? I recommend approval of minutes dated March 3rd, 2021 study meeting with the changes made on Pages 2, 3, and 5. with the changes made on Page two, three, and five. Also recommend favorable approval for March tenth, twenty-twenty-one study meeting, and study meeting March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one with the necessary changes on Page nine.
I support Commissioner Culpepper. I'm glad you made that motion.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, I try to keep up to date with our stuff.
I've got a, a motion with recommended changes by Commissioner Culpepper scored by Commissioner Willis. I will roll call vote again.
Yes, sir. Mr. Huntington?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens Gunn?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you do have the approval for, for your minutes as presented.
Okay. Next, we have a public comment portion. Any person wishing to address the commission shall be limited to a period of three minutes or la, or three minutes, and the same rules of procedure as previous. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks. No person shall use abusive language. Any person who violates this shall be directed to be silent. Calling numbers on the screen?
So if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, again, if, if you do have a comment for the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes to make your comment.
Any person wishing to address the commission?
Yes.
Is there anyone who would like to make a comment?
Yes.
All right, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Byer, seventeen four six six Gateway Circle, directly behind the proposed site. First question is, we're talking after you've already approved it. So what we're saying, is it relevant at all? Any of the, of the guests, we've been waiting for three hours to get to this, and then you already approved the project without hearing any of our?
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, that, that's strange.
Are your comments related, are your comments related to the McKinley School?
No, related to the dome.
To the dome.
Yeah, there's no public hearing on the dome.
Okay, if I could, this is Planner Crowe. Your comments, your comments will be part of the record, which will go forward to the city council as they consider the site plan for the dome.
Hear what I'm saying?
So you go ahead, you go ahead and make your comments.
So the first question is, well, how are we going to steal this from, from the residents right here? Is there going to be a wall put up in front of it? Because having people come in from ten o'clock to ten o'clock, you know, Saturday and Sunday during, during the week, you know, this is a quiet neighborhood. We don't, we don't need people in the neighborhood late at night making noise out in that parking lot. We've been living here eleven years, and it shut, everything shuts down about five thirty, six o'clock. That's the way it's been with IBM building. What is being done to keep us? People are still going to drive down Gateway Circle because they're not going to realize they can't get in until after they see that they can't get in. So that's going to fall the street. It doesn't seem, it does not seem to do anything for the city of Southfield. Looks like everybody's coming in from outside into the city.
Hey, so just, just to answer some of your concerns.
Hold on, hold on. Please let them finish their comments first, and then you can, if you want to respond, you can respond after that.
Okay.
And also, this is the first that we're hearing about it, maybe a month and a half ago, that the residents are actually hearing about this. And it looks like we're talking about having something up in, what, five months, four months? I don't even understand where the community fits into this equation at all. So those are my comments. I'm totally against this. I'm sure my neighbors are, and I'm sure they're going to let their voices be heard, so.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, so, can I jump in?
Now, off the street, this is a parking lot where nobody lives. You've got north land. There's plenty of other places to put this away from residents. I'm sorry, that's it.
That's okay, thank you. We want to get through all the public comments before, and then it'll be the chair's discretion if the applicant wants to respond.
They didn't already approve it, it ain't told us. Well, yep, hello, hi, my name is Pam Ellis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Pam Ellis. I'm at Gateway Circle, seventeen four fifty. I've been there since it was built, two thousand and one. And I, you know, a couple of the things. There are one, two, three other domes. Franklin Athletic Club, six point seven miles away, the Beach Woods at five point one, and then Royal Oak Township, which is nine point eight miles away. I, I'm not understanding why we need a five, a five-story structure in, in front of the building. And, and then I also heard the hours of ten to ten, and I, and I'm going to echo probably what, what the gentleman said before me, and that ten, ten PM on Saturday and Sunday, Sunday is, Sunday is really work, preparing for work Monday. And ten o'clock with the noise, and people coming out of, out of the dome and schools, or, you know, people coming out of the dome, people have to go to work on Monday morning. And, you know, light or something from there. I think that's going to disturb the people that we have in the community on the south side there. And I, I just, anyway, I guess that's all I have to say. I, I want you to, you know, I want, I want the, you know, you guys to really seriously consider putting it, putting it somewhere else. And I know that you want to hear a lot of, it's not in my backyard, but I really don't think that this is a really good idea, simply because Southfield does not have enough youth to support this, that's one. And I, I stated this earlier, Southfield is a, is a maturing city, and it's, I'm told that one of the fifty, top fifty cities in the United States for retirement. So I don't know where all of these kids are going to come from to play soccer, play baseball, play this and play that. We're already closing up schools because we don't have enough students. So I guess we're shipping them in from other communities where parents are going to drop those kids off. And I guess Gateway Circle becomes the babysitters for the kids that are going to be unattended by their parents. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there any other public comments? Go ahead.
Yep, my name is Laura Squilliff. I'm a resident at one seven three one five Gateway Circle. No, I'm on mute, so I don't, my computer's on mute. I don't know why I'm echoing, I apologize. Anyway, twenty-year resident, original owner.
Maybe turn the volume down.
It, it's off. My computer is on mute.
Better now, go ahead.
Yeah, it's been on mute. Anyway, several, several of us are original owners. We've stuck it out through two thousand and eight when our homes lost value. We committed to stay through all of this and work to improve our property value with the guidance of our board. We obviously like the peace and quiet. Our entrance is very inviting. I have no idea. I heard at the beginning of this that, that the residents in the community.
Yeah.
I find that hard to believe. I haven't been consulted, several of us have. At any rate, we all found out about this recently, as was stated earlier. The one thing I would ask is how any of you would feel pulling up to a dome, an eyesore like that, as you pull into your home? We've worked hard to make this a beautiful, quiet area, and that will be an eyesore. I don't care what anyone says, use sleek, whatever descriptor you want. I don't think any of you would want to pull up to your home with that as your greeting. So I'm all for generating revenue. I'm all for attracting people to Southfield, but bringing in other communities to take advantage of our area doesn't seem fair. And I don't want the traffic, I don't want the noise, I don't want the strangers. And this is the first time I've ever considered selling. And if this moves forward, I will not be the only person who will want to sell. And I don't think that's really what you want to do, is chase people, chase residents out of Southfield. If that's the case, you're doing a great job. So that's all I have to say. I definitely don't support this. Proudly disappointed.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, say your name and address for the record.
Oh, yes, this is Tara Smith. I live at one seven three seven eight Gateway Circle. I was on the corner last month, and I got the impression that we were supposed to have another meeting in order to express our concern. I wait on this line for three hours to find out that all the people who don't live in my neighborhood have voted it in. That's utterly ridiculous. And I know who dropped the ball, but I am not pleased. I'm a twenty-year resident.
Hello.
Again, hello.
We don't support that.
Yeah, Terry, go, go ahead. We heard you.
Okay, oh, okay. So I'm a twenty-year resident and I owner, not a renter. I own my place, just put money into my, my, my home, and now you're coming up with a big dome in, in a residential area. I can't believe this. This is utterly ridiculous. Mr. Culpepper, put it in your neighborhood. Mr. Jefferson, whoever, the other names, I can't recall, put it in your neighborhood. Don't come with that in my neighborhood, where I've worked hard, single parent. Trying to have something nice, I don't think so. I don't care what, what plans you have from where the entrance is and all that. Who wants to, who wants to come home to a dome? And then the hours are utterly ridiculous. Ten to ten, seven to seven. What kind of crap is that? I don't want it. So whatever we have to do, when is the, let us know when the city council meeting is. I will sit out and protest and whatever I have to do. And Mr. Omar, I don't know who the builder is. I don't know how y'all coming with this project without considering the neighborhood. Put it in your neighborhood, wherever you live, put it in your neighborhood. Don't put it in mine.
Well, you can't tell him that because he live there.
Right. So, so Mr. Culpepper, all the ones who just voted on it, why don't you put it in your neighborhood?
This is, uh, saying someone's name is a personal attack, so please refrain from that.
Okay, well, well, I'm, I'm sorry.
Heard your comments, thank you.
If, if I had the other ones, I would too. Again, my name is Tara Smith. I live at one seven three seven eight Gateway Circle.
Okay, thank you. They'll, they'll restate the answers to your questions at the end when the city council meetings are. Any other public comments?
Yeah, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name is, my name is Rashard Jones, one seven six five two Gateway Circle. We've been living at the property since two thousand and five, so we're original owners as well. Sorry, I'm getting some feedback.
Why don't you put it in your neighborhood?
This is, um...
Thank you. Can you do, please? Um, so my, 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 uh, question, or more, more or less my statement is that I definitely oppose of this being put up in front of our property. I think there are some ideal locations really directly south of us. It would be a perfect anchor for OCC, which has a lot of green space, right, directly right in front of the campus. That would be idea, ideal. Or you can put it in, in the property right next to the door to that, which was at the hotel that was torn down. I think putting it next to the IBM building, it, it really takes away the green space from the IBM building, which we definitely need. And it puts it too close to our property, and it brings a, a tran, more transient traffic to our property that we are definitely opposed to. And I, I'm, I'm hoping that the current owner is, is recognizing some of the vandalism that has taken place without the dome being present. Um, there's, there's quite a few vehicles that have, that appear to have been vandalized most recently. So I think that, I just want to go on record again to say I oppose this. And there are better locations that would be more suitable. And I don't think it benefits at all any of the residents in the area or in Southfield.
Okay, thank you. Any other callers?
Yes. Yes.
State your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Janelle Jones. I live at one seven six five two Gateway Circle. And I just want to go on record, I've lived here for sixteen years, and I am against the proposed sports dome. My home is directly in front of the proposed sports dome. And I think will be an eyesore, and I also feel it will lower my property values. Um, I'm concerned with excessive noise, loitering, and possible littering, and the increased traffic.
I have a comment.
On our private Gateway Circle.
Yeah.
I also want, yes, I'm speaking. Yes, I'm speaking. So I also want to talk about last year. The owner of the IBM building leased the parking lot in front of my home, which will currently now be the proposed parking lot for the sports dome, to Amazon. And Amazon hours was ten AM to ten PM. It was a complete nightmare. Amazon had excessive noise violations where I was constantly calling Southfield Police to come out and issue violations to them. And it was constant littering for people picking up McDonald's and eating that McDonald's in the parking lot, and throwing all their trash in the lot in front of my home. I also had a lot of increased traffic where I would come out of my home, and literally the parking lot is literally steps away from my front door. So the parking lot basically extends just a couple steps away from my front door. And I would have Amazon workers standing there, talking loud. My husband's working from home, a lot of my neighbors are working from home now. And when I get off work and I come home and I have my child out there, I don't want that transient traffic of people running around littering, making excessive noise in my neighborhood. And also, the issue, while I've been going on my daily walk, I've noticed that cars, the tires have been stolen off multiple cars in the parking lot of IBM building. So there's a security issue. So now you're going to bring in more traffic to that lot. That means that's going to bring more criminals accessing and taking a look at, then increase traffic here in this lot. So I am fully on record that it seems as if the board has gone ahead and made this approval without our voices being heard, and I'm deeply disappointed in that. But I really feel the owner should be responsible for building a privacy brick wall in front of my home so that I don't have to stare at that eyesore. But I would really prefer that the dome be built in the vacant lot in front of OCC. That would be a perfect spot for a sports dome. There's plenty of parking there. So I really, really hope that the Southfield City Council declines this proposed sports dome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we had another person trying to get in to speak a minute, a few minutes ago.
Yeah. Daniel Byer, one seven three five nine Gateway Circle.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the dome is really disrespectful to us in this community. Um, we are the community here. Like they said, when Amazon came in, it, it would be countless times where you're trying to turn into Gateway Circle, and they think they're the right-of-way because they have a big truck. Or, you know, just thinking forward to a whole sports team either leaving to go to a bar, or they already have their six-pack in their cars and decide to drink until ten, eleven, twelve, one, two in the morning in the parking lot. It's sports, we know sports bring spirits, spirits bring sports. You know, how many times have we hung out after a game and just sat there and, and chopped it up just because we didn't want to go home? You know what I'm saying? My kids, I got ten-year-old twin boys. They got to drive by a sports dome they can't even use. That sounds ridiculous to me. And when you do have so much desolate land across the street, it, it's obvious that there's some sort of deal being made here that wasn't pronounced to us. And all you have to do is walk around, you know, it's not like... and all you have to do is walk around, you know, it's not like it's a thousand residents, it's, it's, it's just us. I mean, that would've been an easy decision to make if there was thinking, um, from the community, like it, it sounded chipper, chipper when my man was going over the plans, it, it, it's not chipper from us. Just because those guys on the, um, commission or whatever, you know, they're, they're, they're agreeing to it. Nobody came out to us and knocked on our doors and asked us about that. You know, it's not going to be good. And I came and, you know, you got all these people that say they're gonna come use it. It just doesn't seem right, something's fishy about the whole thing. It, 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 we don't want it, period.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I have a comment.
Yep, uh, state your name and address, please.
My name is Charles Richardson, my address is one, seven, three, five, six Gateway Circle. My comment is about tying on to the previous comments and I'm focusing right now on walking traffic. Understand that the driving tra- traffic will be directed to a different location. Two things, you'll still have people drive up and, and make it difficult for residents again, but just thinking about walking traffic as they leave the dome, there is no area to keep walking traffic from walking into our community and doing things that might not be to the advantage of our community. So I just want you to consider how that can be addressed. I'm thinking about walking traffic and the potential for mishaps, mistakes, harm, damage and the other things that come along with that. And like the others that have preceded me, there's some great locations nearby, why do it there? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other pub- public comment?
Just for the record, we lost a lot of people waiting this long.
Just for the record, all of us wanna go home too. Well, or no, that's, that's my, that's, that's my per- that's my opinion. Uh, any other public comment?
Yeah, it should've happened to yourself.
I know, that's right.
All right, any other public comments here? Well, all right, hearing none, we will close the public comment, uh, portion. Any other miscellaneous items?
Um, if I may, through the chair, just with regard to, um, your May meetings, uh, we do have items for, um, your May agenda and your next meeting, uh, is scheduled for next Wednesday, um, May fifth.
Actually, we probably should've addressed a couple of those comments of, of zoning and when, when, uh, projects are allowed and when, maybe just a quick summary if we could of when things are public, um, what's the word I'm looking for? When things require a public hearing, when they don't, just for, uh, and when, uh, zoning allows certain uses or doesn't?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to address that, so whenever there's a zoning amendment or a special land use, those are legislative items, that means that the, uh, the council, um, has to act based on state law. Those require public hearings, both, uh, at the planning commission level for recommendation and then prior to the council taking final action. Site plans are governed by, uh, the zoning district that they're located in. And if it's a principal permitted use and, um, the site plan meets all of the requirements for that district, then, uh, that does not trigger a, a public hearing. And, um, we do take comments, um, from the public if they wanna email or, or write in up to five o'clock the night of the meeting and we take those under consideration. And these, um, these meetings are taped, uh, and available for the council to review as well as the meeting minutes, um, are available for the council to review as well. In this particular case, um, speaking on the dome, uh, it's a regional center zoning and correct me if I, I mistake this, um, Jeff. And, uh, recreational uses and facilities are permitted by right in the zoning as well as office and a number of other uses. So if they're permitted by right, it doesn't trigger a public hearing and the commission is bound to make sure that they meet the requirements before they, they make a recommendation on it. So unlike, uh, some of the previous cases that we had that triggered a rezoning, this was, um, permitted by right within the zoning district and as long as they meet the requirements, um, planning commission moves it forward to city council. Now, as of now, there's a study session scheduled for city council on Monday, May third and then it's likely we'll come back on May twenty-fourth for a public hearing, not a public hearing, a public meeting that they'll act on this case. So the, um, residents have an opportunity to submit comments up until that time or again to express their concerns during the public comment portion of the council meetings. But we will, um, we will make sure that the, the issues that were raised tonight with regards to site plan issues are covered, uh, while we present this and move this thing forward to city council. And we will circle back with the applicant, um, they did make a statement that they had met with the the, um, subdivision or, or the residential community and we'll find out some more detail of actually who they met with and see if we can address some of these concerns that they've raised tonight. If they're relevant to site plan. Unless there's any other questions on that.
I think there was, there were some other comments about building fences to screen and, and gates and keeping people from walking through neighborhoods and things like that. I'm not sure how much this landowner would have control over building a gate to someone else's property, things of that nature.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I, we are aware that there has been, um, some, some vandalism or, or, um, some theft of, um, break-ins on the, in the vehicles. I think partly that's due to the fact that the building is not fully occupied, many people are working from home. And, um, the one thing I will say about this, uh, activity is that, uh, it'll put more eyes on the parking lot and it'll probably discourage any vandalism or, or criminal activity in the parking lot. And the other thing is, al- although it's, we will have the operators specifically address some of the operating concerns, I believe this is mostly geared towards youth sports activities. Um, not exclusive to, but, uh, I, I would imagine that, uh, a number of youth, uh, baseball and soccer teams will be using it. And I had previously stated as when I was a, a coach, I did tournament and travel. Um, we utilize, um, domes like this or indoor recreation facilities early spring when it was cold or, or late fall to get some extra practice in. And so the majority of the people that are using this are family-oriented and, 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 and family-forming age children. Anything else, Mr. Chair, I could try to answer?
Uh, I'll, I'll think of, uh, twenty more things, no, um, that was, that was most of it. I, I guess the, um, the, the fence height, uh, what's an allowable privacy fence, what, what would be a required fence? That seemed to be a question that came up quite a few times.
Yeah, and again, we'll, uh, we'll look at the site plan and see if there's any areas where we can beef off some screen, landscape screening or we'll, we'll just see what's triggered. I would imagine, and again, I, I'd have to verify, but, um, there is some screening requirements between non-residential and residential, so there may be already, uh, a wall or a fence on the north side of the property, but we'll, we'll verify that. And again, the, the dome that's being proposed is closer to Nine Mile. So it's on the southern part of the parcel and there's a large expanse parking lot before we get to the residence to the north.
Thank you. All I had, any, any other comments from the commission? Hearing none, uh, meeting adjourned, we'll see you next time.